Folks in the back, feel free to have a seat. And back to you, hearing officer, Webster Hawkins.
Thank you, welcome. We are about ready to begin the informational hearing at the Gem Energy Storage Center. This hearing will be conducted in English and we are offering Spanish interpretation here in the boardroom as well as on Zoom. So I want to say at the outset, if you are here in person and need a headset to hear the interpreter, please visit the interpreter's table. And is that, where is that located, in the back of the room? Good? Good. And then otherwise, you can find a seat here. If you are on Zoom and you want to listen to the Spanish interpretation, I'd like to turn it over to our Spanish interpreter to give the instructions to people online.
Sorry, Renee, we not go live, we not start the webinar yet. Do you want us to start or later?
No, just giving instructions to folks about how they can access the different language channels.
But our members may not hear when, if we don't start the webinar.
I understand, thank you. Please start the webinar.
Kevin, can you please head back please?
Yep, okay, I just want to confirm that I'm being heard in the room?
Yes, you are.
Yes, you are, thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and start the webinar in three, two, one.
Recording in progress.
Thank you, and I do want to turn it over to the Spanish interpreter to provide instructions to people online about how they can access Spanish interpretation in the language channel. Thank you.
Saludos, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Julieta Rocha. Dar instrucciones a aquellos de ustedes que quieran escuchar la reunión en español. Hay un intérprete disponible a través de la plataforma Zoom. Para unirse al canal en español, haga clic en el icono de globo pequeño en la parte inferior de su aplicación de Zoom. Selecciona el canal donde dice Spanish. Luego haga clic en la frase siguiente donde dice mute original audio para silenciar el audio original. Si tiene preguntas o si gusta hacer algún comentario, favor de oprimir el icono de la mano alzada y abierta y así podrá hacer su comentario. Gracias.
Gracias. Hello, I want to note for the record that it is 4:35 PM on August 11th and we are now going on the record in this proceeding. My name is Renee Webster Hawkins, I'm the hearing officer for this proceeding. Can I get my screens going? So I am the hearing officer for the proceedings the Energy Commission is conducting on this application for certification for the Gem Energy Storage Center project 21- AFC-02. And I will hereby open the informational hearing on the application as noticed in the docket for this proceeding pursuant to CEC regulations, section 1709.7. I would like the record to reflect that we just concluded the site visit for the parties and the public to view the proposed site for the project at 8684 Sweets Road, Rosamund, California, 93560, as well as the Whirlwind Substation. Next slide, please. Just a bit of housekeeping. The notice for this site visit and informational hearing was published on August 1st and it includes the agenda that we will cover today. There should also be copies in the back of the room for all the participants here today. This hearing is being conducted as a hybrid meeting with the assigned committee, representatives of the parties, the public advisor, and hearing officer appearing in person here at the Rosamund Community Services District Boardroom, and other representatives of the parties teleconferencing via Zoom. The public is participating both in person and via Zoom. As mentioned, Spanish interpretation is being offered in person and on Zoom, and all participants should be aware that this hearing is being recorded. You will hear us talk about a docket repeatedly this evening. At the Energy Commission, each power plant project has its own electronic file folder. This electronic file folder is called the docket, and you can access the docket through the Energy Commission's website. During her presentation, the representative of the public advisor will show you how to find the docket number 21 AFC-02 for this project. Additionally, I will often use the term "project" or "proposed project," and when I do, I will be referring to the application for certification for the Gem Energy Storage Center as the project was named in the application originally filed on December 1st, 2021. I want to acknowledge that just last Friday, August 5th, the applicant for this project notified the CEC of a name change and is now referring to the project as the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. To reduce the possibility of confusion, we held off changing the name of the project in the docket or on the CEC webpage until after this site visit and informational hearing are concluded. However, this evening, we will refer to the project as Willow Rock in the hearing pursuant to the notice provided by the applicant. So before we turn to the purpose of the proceeding and the scheduled agenda for the day, I do want to briefly hand it over to the representative from our public advisor's office, Ms. Dorothy Marini, to provide all participants in the room and on Zoom with instructions on how to participate in today's hearing. Ms. Marini?
Thank you, hearing officer Webster Hawkins.
Next slide, please.
Next slide. So for individuals, so for individuals that are in the room, you can go ahead and utilize QR codes in the back of the room, look at it on the side of the wall here, or you can utilize cards that are on the table. Fill out your name, affiliation, and bring them to me and we'll read them out. If you're utilizing the QR codes, they'll be populated somewhere already for us, and we'll call your name once public comment time starts. For individuals that are on Zoom, go ahead and utilize the raise hand feature, looks like an open palm or a high five, at the bottom of your screen or device. And if you are calling in, you would press star nine to indicate that you'd like to make a comment and star six to unmute on your end. Please be mindful if you're utilizing, depending on the device you're utilizing, if you use speakerphone, we may not be able to hear you. Now we'll have three minutes per person allotted for public comment and one representative per organization. And once you're given the opportunity to speak, please state and spell your name for the record and then you may begin your comment. Thank you, hearing officer Webster Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Marini. Next slide, please. You will see this slide later in this evening's presentation when Ms. Marini presents in more detail about the ways that the public can participate throughout the power plant proceeding. But I wanted to be sure that everyone in attendance here today has this information about how to contact the public advisor if you need any assistance in participating in today's hearing. Next slide. So having addressed the housekeeping and ensured public accessibility, we want to officially welcome all of your participation here in this hearing. We want to thank the community of Rosamund for readily hosting this event here in the Rosamund Community Services District Boardroom. The proceedings for this application for certification for Willow Rock are being managed by a committee of commissioners appointed by the CEC, including, to my right, Presiding Member and Commissioner Courtney Macaro and Associate Member and Commissioner Andrew McAllister. They are both joining me here on the dais today, including Commissioner McAllister's advisor, Mr. Brian Early, and I'd like to give an opportunity at this point for the committee members to make any introductory remarks.
Thank you so much, Renee. Good afternoon, everyone. As Renee mentioned, I'm Courtney Macaro, a Commissioner of the Energy Commission, and I'm the Presiding Member over this proceeding. And it is my pleasure to be able to be here with you today. It's been many years since we've been able to be out in the communities where our projects are located. It's very important, I think, for my fellow commissioners and I to be here with the community, to understand community concern, to be accessible. So I'm very pleased to be here and I'm gratified as I look around the room, this is a packed room. This tells me that it's important for public officials, community members, and others to understand what this project is, what does it mean, what are the implications, what are possible benefits. And so I think, like you, I'm in a learning mode. I'm very intrigued by the technology, it's very new. I want to understand what the applicant is going to explain to us. I think equally importantly, I want to hear Energy Commission staff tell us, hey, here are the environmental and other impacts that we're looking at. Here are some of the issues that we're seeing that might need to be resolved early on or throughout the proceeding. And so we're going to hear from applicant, we're going to hear from Energy Commission's staff, and you're also going to hear later on from our public advisor. And to me, that's one of the most important aspects of today's proceeding, is the public advisor is going to explain how you, as members of the public, can participate in this proceeding, how you can ask questions, how you get questions answered, whether or not you just want to be a member of the public paying attention, or if you actually want to intervene and get some sort of party status in this proceeding. And that's something of significance that will be explained later, what it means to be a party. So many different ways for the public to learn about the project, to participate in the proceedings, and to how their voice is heard. This is just the beginning, I think, of what's going to be maybe a years-long process. And so again, I'm very pleased to be here. I thank the Rosamund Community Services District for the kindness that you've shown the Energy Commission in allowing us to use this boardroom. I think the applicant for hosting the tour, giving us a sense of what the site looks like. The rendering is helpful to be there to understand where a project is situated in a community and allows us to understand where sensitive receptors are, and allows us to see how close a project is to residents, and allows us to better understand community concern. So appreciate that we were able to do that. We have a packed agenda, there's so much more I could say, I'm going to be quiet and allow Commissioner McAllister to speak. But again, truly, I appreciate seeing this turnout and I am very grateful to be here this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Macaro. I am also very happy to be here, I'm Andrew McAllister, the Associate Member on the Committee. And I too am extremely interested in digging into this and really getting into the brass tacks of this process. I wanted to just reiterate, though, that access is key. Our process really is our strength in going through a new and innovative application of technology at this kind of scale. And, you know, community concerns are paramount and I want to just make sure that everyone knows that they have full access to the process. It is a fairly structured process and that's for a very good reason, so that we can maintain a docket that is robust and transparent since we get to the end of the process with whatever decision comes out of it, that in a way that's as accountable and as transparent as possible and based on the record. And so it's really, if there are concerns in the public or any of the stakeholders, if we have an intervenor, it's just paramount that we hear from those entities. That's the strength of, that's why we're here, to begin that process and sort of begin to connect the dots on this project in the real world, right, instead of just on paper. And so I want to thank the Rosamund Community Services District and the county as well for just all the innovation and just sort of the support of our clean energy transition or just our energy economy generally as well. And on our team, you know, we have Hearing Officer Webster Hawkins, we have our Chief Counsel's Office, Diane Vorders, Jared Babula are here, the public advisor, Northrop Marini is here. So you really have our A-team here for this process and it's not just here today, it's throughout, throughout the proceeding as it goes forward. So as Commissioner Macaro said, it's, there's a, there's an interesting and exciting, you know, kind of profile to this, to this project because it is innovative and it hasn't been done like this before. And, you know, we're looking forward into the sort of, the clean energy ecosystem and all of its elements in California as we move towards a decarbonized energy economy. So we are obligated to really dig into the details, to run every potential scenario to ground, to really try to deepen our understanding so that we have comfort, so we have comfort in the decision as it moves forward, as the process moves forward and we near a decision. So that access is key. And, you know, finally, I'll just say, we are making ever more effort at the Commission to open access, open language access to our processes. I really appreciate that we have translation here present today. Obviously, you all are talking Spanish, so you can do it yourself, so you're a commissioner. Yeah, I take it very seriously. So I wanted to just, you know, we know that this is a diverse committee, a community, and really want to just create a comfort with participation in the process for everyone in the community, right? And not everybody can be here today, but just every kind of pathway for participation we want to keep open. So I just can't emphasize that, you know, a big infrastructure investment like this needs that kind of participation. So really happy to be here and again, thanks to everyone and thanks to the hearing officers for really keeping us, keeping us moving forward and finally, thanks to the applicant for the tour and sort of beginning to ground truth, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. As Commissioner McAllister indicated, for the CEC staff, we have with us today Mr. John Hilliard of the Siding Transmission and Environmental Protection Division, or STEP. We also have Ms. Diane Vorders and Mr. Jared Babula as staff attorneys for STEP. Also for the applicant, we have with us Kurt Hildebrand, Senior Vice President for Hydersthorpe, and Jeffrey Harris and Samantha Newmeyer of Ellison Schneier Harrison Donlin. You're going to be hearing more from them in their presentations in just a bit. In welcoming all of you here today and as you participate, I do invite you to indicate your preferred pronouns as appropriate so we can respect your self-identification. So at this point, I would also like to ask if there are any representatives of local, regional, state, or federal governments, government agencies, or representatives of Native American tribes? And if so, I would invite you just to come forward to the podium to introduce yourselves.
Good afternoon, I'm Laurel Iodia, I'm the Director of the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, and I'm here representing the Kern County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Ken Lerner, I'm a field representative for State Senator Shannon Grove of the 16th Senate District, and just very happy to be here, it was a wonderful site tour and glad to be a part of this. Thank you.
And hearing officer Webster Hawkins, we also have an individual answer. Thank you. Carrie Swonberg?
Hi there, yeah, this is Carrie Swonberg from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. I work in the renewable energy program.
Thank you. Next we have Sarah Baum?
Hi, I'm Sarah Bame. I'm a senior environmental scientist, a specialist with California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and I work in the CISA permitting unit.
Thank you. Next we have Marshall Steiers.
Hi, my name is Marshall Steiers, and I work for the Department of Water and Power, representing the department's interest in this project, and I work in the environmental planning and sustainability group. Thank you.
That is all, person.
So if you've, as you've heard from the committee members, the purpose of this informational hearing is really to inform you, the public, about the proposed Willow Rock project and to explain the CEC process described in our statutes and regulations that governs the CEC's review and analysis of the environmental impacts, safety, and reliability of the project, including the construction and long-term operation of the power plant. During this hearing, you will learn about the project in detail from the project applicant. To quickly set the stage, Willow Rock is described in the application as an advanced compressed air energy storage, or A case, facility with an A case capacity of 500 megawatts. It will be located at 8684 Sweets Road outside of Rosamund in Kern County, on a 71-acre site. Just prior to this hearing, the CEC organized a site visit for those interested members of the public to view the proposed site. This informational hearing is designed to provide more detailed information to the project, about the project to the public, in particular to this community and to interested local and state agencies. You will receive information about the different ways you can participate in the CEC's power plant licensing process, including the review and consideration of this application for certification for the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. This hearing takes off the opportunity for interested persons to participate. To clarify, this hearing is not considered as part of the evidentiary process, which will commence later on. However, it is very much a part of the administrative record for the application for certification for Willow Rock. On behalf of the committee, my role as hearing officer is to facilitate this evening's hearing as an opportunity for the public to learn more about the proposed Willow Rock project and the CEC's process for reviewing the application. Additionally, as you've heard, the committee is keenly interested in listening to the questions and comments from all voices in the community. This includes members of the public, representatives of community and government organizations, and elected officials alike. The committee encourages all participants to ask questions and invites the applicant and CEC staff to answer those comments and questions as you are able. Next slide. To accomplish these objectives for the hearing, the following agenda will frame this event. First, we will invite the applicant, CEC staff, and the public advisor to deliver prepared presentations. The applicant will describe in more detail the Willow Rock project. CEC staff will describe the application for certification process, as well as staff's role as a party in the proceeding and in reviewing the AFC. And the public advisor's representative will describe the formal and informal ways that interested members of the public can participate in the Willow Rock AFC proceeding. Those three presentations. Next, the committee will facilitate an initial discussion of the environmental and other identified issues for the Willow Rock project. Please note that this hearing is informational and that no evidence is intended to be weighed, nor will the committee make any decisions. Rather, the purpose of the discussion will be for the committee to listen to a summary of the issues identified by staff and staff's proposed plan for discovery, as well as applicant's initial response. In similar fashion, there will be a discussion about the schedule for the review of the Willow Rock AFC. The committee will invite staff and applicant to summarize any motions or proposals for workshops or meet and confer in order to harmonize the expectations or reliance of the applicant on the statutory timelines for the Commission's final decision of the AFC, combined with the concerns articulated by staff about gathering sufficient information to complete their required assessments of the project. After those discussions, we will invite the public to make comments and ask questions. Again, the committee will encourage the applicant, CEC staff, to answer those questions from the public as they are able. And then after public comment, the committee has the option to retreat into closed session to deliberate on the information presented this evening. And finally, after that, we will adjourn the informational hearing. Does anyone have any questions about how we're going to proceed? So hearing then, next slide, please. To continue with my presentation as the hearing officer, I want to acknowledge all of the people and groups that the CEC considers to be participants or potential participants in each CEC, AFC proceeding. The CEC or the Energy Commission is the state's primary energy policy and planning agency. It is made up of five commissioners who are appointed by the governor. The decision on whether to approve or deny the power plant project is made by the full commission. As mentioned earlier, the Commission assigned a committee, including Presiding Member Commissioner Macaro and Associate Member Commissioner McAllister, to manage these proceedings. The committee manages the proceedings and conducts committee events, such as the informational hearing tonight. The committee hears evidence about the project, including its potential environmental impacts. And then the committee then produces a written decision called the Presiding Member's Proposed Decision that is considered by the entire Energy Commission. I will give you a more detailed explanation of the Presiding Member's Proposed Decision in just a little bit when we talk about how the Energy Commission reviews requests to build power plants. Each Commissioner has an advisor, such as Mr. Early joining us tonight, who helps them with their work, including work done on power plant applications. I am the hearing officer. I'm an attorney assigned to help the committee conduct the meetings and hearings and to assist them in writing documents for the proposed project. When I refer to the committee, I'm generally referring to all of the people sitting here on the dais today. CEC staff from the Siding Transmission and Environmental Protection Division, together with their staff attorneys, have the responsibility to analyze proposed projects like Willow Rock. And I'll describe that a little bit more in just a little bit. The applicant is the entity who applies for a license to build and construct a power plant. Gem A Case LLC, in this case, is the organization that initially filed the application for certification for the project on December 1st, 2021, and is thus considered the applicant for this proposed project. The CEC solicits input from government agencies at the local, state, and federal levels, particularly on applicable laws, ordinances, regulations, and standards that apply to the project or site. The CEC also consults with Native American tribes and nations on proposed projects. The CEC staff will talk more about their outreach and consultation with government agencies and Native American tribes in their presentation. As you've heard, the public is an essential voice in the CEC power plant licensing process. We are committed to robust public outreach and to facilitating public participation in our process. The public advisor is a position dedicated in law to assisting the public with participation in these proceedings, and a representative from her office, Ms. Marini, will describe more how the public can participate both formally and informally. Lastly, intervenors are interested groups and individuals who want to become formal parties and take a more active role in the process. As a party, interveners can participate in evidentiary hearings by introducing their own evidence and cross-examine other parties. Ms. Marini will also describe how to become an intervenor in this proceeding. Next slide, please. So to set the stage for today and the entire proceeding for Willow Rock, I want to provide a description of the CEC's role as concisely but as completely as possible. I usually do not like to read slides, but reading the words on this slide are important for all of you to understand what the CEC's role and authority is in reviewing the application for certification and deciding whether or not to approve or deny a license for Willow Rock to be built and operated. Under state law, in the Public Resources Code, also known as the Warren Alquist Act, the CEC has exclusive permitting authority over thermal power plants that are 50 megawatts or greater. In granting this authority to the CEC, the Warren Alquist Act sets specific and comprehensive requirements for the review of the potential environmental impacts, engineering, safety, and reliability aspects of the proposed thermal power plants and its related facilities like transmission lines. This permit, if approved by the CEC, is the exclusive permit for the construction and operation of the power plant in lieu of any other required permits. Therefore, the CEC serves as the one-stop shop for the licensing of a facility of this You will hear this evening how the Warren Alquist Act charges CEC staff with reviewing the applications. Following staff review of the application and evidentiary hearings conducted by the committee, the committee will issue a Presiding Member's Proposed Decision that makes the recommendation to the full commission to approve, deny, or modify the proposed project. In the end, the commission must determine whether the proposed power plant and related facilities will conform with any applicable state, local, or regional laws, ordinances, regulations, or standards, which we will often refer to as laws. Next slide, please. So focusing on the environmental analysis for a moment. So focusing on the environmental analysis for a moment, the CEC is the lead agency for this proposed project under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA. The Warren Alquist Act creates what is called a Certified Regulatory Program that the Energy Commission uses to prepare its environmental analysis. This Certified Regulatory Program means that the Energy Commission does not prepare an environmental impact report per se. However, the Energy Commission does prepare written documents that are substantively equivalent to an EIR. These documents include an analysis of the potential environmental impacts of the project, including mitigation measures which we call conditions of certification, to reduce or eliminate any significant adverse effects of a proposed powerplant that it may have on the environment. The documents prepared under the Certified Regulatory Program also discuss alternatives to the proposed project. The Energy Commission's analysis is very similar in substance to an environmental impact report, but the process is different. The names of the documents are also different. Next slide, please. Procedurally, under the Certified Regulatory Program, the CEC staff has the responsibility to analyze proposed projects. It is important to remember that the CEC staff is considered an independent party under the evidentiary process for the review of an AFC. Even though the CEC staff and the committee members are all part of the Energy Commission, the staff functions independently from the committee, just like other parties to this proceeding. Therefore, CEC staff will prepare an independent evaluation of the environmental impacts of the proposed project. The staff's evaluation of the application will include an analysis of the engineering, reliability, public health, and safety aspects of the project. And additionally, CEC staff will review the federal, state, local laws, ordinances, and regulations to see if the proposed powerplant will conform to them. What's important to note is that under the Certified Regulatory Program, the documents that will contain the environmental impact analysis that you would normally see in an EIR will be in what we call a preliminary staff assessment and then a final staff assessment. After the comment period on the preliminary staff assessment is complete, the Energy Commission staff prepares a final staff assessment. The final staff assessment includes the CEC staff's responses to any public comments received and any changes made to the analysis based on those comments. And in preparing those documents, CEC staff will hold workshops for the parties to discuss substantive issues with government agencies and the public. So when the CEC staff speaks in just a few minutes, they will provide more detail about their role and process. Next slide, please. You've heard about the evidentiary portion of this proceeding. After the final staff assessment is filed, this committee will hold evidentiary hearings. At these hearings, the parties, including any interveners, will present evidence. During these hearings, the committee will listen to the evidence, and the public will also be given the opportunity to participate in those hearings and offer comments. All public comments will become part of the record, but the committee cannot base its proposed factual findings on public comments alone. Next slide, please. After hearing all of the evidence, the Presiding Member, with help from me and in consultation with the Associate Member, will prepare the Presiding Member's Proposed Decision. This written document will contain the analysis and conclusions the committee has made about the factual and legal questions presented during the evidentiary hearings. The committee can recommend that the proposed project be approved, denied, or modified. The Presiding Member's Proposed Decision, or PMPD, will also contain conditions of certification that are designed to mitigate any identified environmental impacts. The conditions of certification also ensure that if the proposed project is built, it will be operated safely and in conformity with all relevant laws, ordinances, and regulations. However, if there are significant environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated, or if there is nonconformance with any laws, the CEC must adopt a statement of overriding consideration before approving the project. The PMPD will be available for public comment for 30 days. And so after that, next slide, please. After the public comment period, the full Energy Commission will consider the PMPD at one of its business meetings. The Energy Commission can adopt, reject, or modify the Presiding Member's Proposed Decision. And once the Energy Commission has acted on the Presiding Member's Proposed Decision, this is the Energy Commission's final decision. Next slide, please. Now I want to discuss something called the ex-party rule. You're going to hear about this again from the public advisor because it is important. The CEC's Certified Regulatory Program is different from most CEQA processes that you may be used to with other government agencies, and the ex-party rule is one important procedural difference. Because the Energy Commission and the committee act like judges, we take very seriously the need to be fair to all of the participants in our cases, whether they are parties to our proceedings or members of the public. And one of the ways that we do this is the ex-party rule. The purpose of the ex-party rule is to provide full disclosure to all participants about any information that may be used as a basis for future decisions on this application. This rule means that all contacts between interested parties, including the public and their committee, including the advisors and me, the hearing officer, regarding any substantive or controversial matter must occur in only two ways. In a public discussion at a meeting where notice of the meeting has been given, such as tonight's informational hearing, or through written comments, through either the e-commenting system or other methods that the public advisor will describe shortly, or that are electronically filed by a party in the applications docket. These documents are automatically emailed to all of the parties and subscribers on the listserv. They are also transmitted to the committee and are available on the Energy Commission's website. What this means is that no party or member of the public may have any off-the-record conversations about substantive matters or issues in dispute about the Willow Rock project with any commissioner, committee member, advisor, or me as the hearing officer. Next slide. So next steps in this proceeding, as I conclude my presentation, I want to give the parties and public a signal of what you can expect following the adjournment of this informational hearing this evening. First, I will issue a hearing officer memorandum to change the name of this project. That memorandum will formally direct the change of the name of the docket. The docket number will stay the same, 21AFC02, but it will change the name associated with that docket number. We'll change the name of the project on the CEC webpage for the project. And all subsequent documentation in this proceeding filed by any participants or members of the public shall refer to Willow Rock Energy Storage Center, or Willow Rock for short. Second, no later than August 26th, excuse me, of 2022, and that's in 15 business days, 15 calendar days, excuse me, we will issue a scheduling order for the pre-hearing phase of the proceeding, laying out the timeframe for discovery, motions, and other procedural requirements prior to the evidentiary hearings. This scheduling order is our best estimate of when things may occur in making a decision on the proposed project. However, the schedule may change over time. The committee may file updated schedules from time to time to reflect changes that may occur. Lastly, from time to time, if you subscribe to the GEM or Willow Rock listserv or mailing list, you will receive notice of meetings, workshops, or hearings, or for the release of documents. For meetings, the law says the CEC must give the public at least 10 days' notice of the date and time of the meeting. Even if an event is listed in the scheduling order, separate notice of those individual events will be given. So these notices will include information about how to participate, by teleconference, phone, or on the computer, or how the public can provide comments at those events. And for documents, the CEC will provide notice when they are ready for review and the deadline to submit any comments that you may have on them. I know that was a lot of information, but I wanted to make sure everybody understands at a high level what the proceeding is going to look like and the committee's role in managing the Willow Rock application. Next slide, please. There we go. Good, thank you. So with that, I'm going to invite the applicant to the podium to deliver its presentation and overview of the Willow Rock project. As you begin, please reintroduce yourselves for the record and spell your last names for the court reporter.
Good afternoon. My name is Kirk Hildebrand, H-I-L-D-E-B-R-A-N-D. Too short. Is that any better? Just want to make sure people...
Yeah, it's fine.
You're good? Well, okay. The public can hear well?
Well, it's okay.
I'm Kirk Hildebrand, Senior Vice President with Hydrostor. It's my pleasure to be here today, and I do want to thank everybody that was able to make our tour today. Your perseverance is to be admired through the heat and the dust, and also send my apologies to members of the commission, commissioners, and members of the public. Kind of got the order backwards in terms of describing our technology after our site visit. We're excited to be able to present that more in-depth discussion of advanced compressed air energy storage technology, what our project will look like out on the ground, and what our requirements are to make this a valuable new resource for the California grid. I do want to take a moment to introduce some of the Hydrostor team that is here today. Some have traveled from our headquarters in Toronto, so I'd like to take an opportunity. Dean Command is our Chief Operating Officer. Kurt Van Wellingen is our CEO and co-founder. Jeff Harris and Samantha Newmeyer are our Lead Counsel on the project. David Stein is our Lead with WSP Boulder, helping with our environmental review. Jeremy is also with WSP Boulder, Jeremy Harris. Julie Gill is with our Community and Government Reg Group. Russell Johnson, should have seen the other guy, Russell, right? Russell Johnson is our Kern County Representative on Public and Community Affairs. Laura Lees is our Lead on Environmental as well, so we've got quite a team here. And who am I missing? Victor Grill is our Project Director. So we have a lot of folks to, I just wanted to highlight for anybody that may have questions going forward, we do have a full team capable of answering those questions here today.
Can all of those names be spelled for the transcript, please?
We'll provide them afterwards. Yeah, we'll provide that in writing afterwards. Happy to do so. One other last point of housekeeping and clarification, our name change that was described accurately, we are now the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. We were previously the GEM Energy Storage Center. Just to clarify the purpose behind that, there is a Gem Hill Mine project that is going through an environmental review process here in Kern County. It was recommended to us by Kern County that we consider a name change, and we figured we would be more happy to accommodate, so henceforth, we are the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. Next slide, please. Provide a quick outline of our presentation this evening. We'll begin with the company background of Hydrostor and our technology, advanced compressed air energy storage. I described it a little bit out on the site, and we'll have a much more in-depth discussion here tonight. We'll also have a four-minute video that does an excellent job describing how the moving pieces work for advanced compressed air energy storage technology. Project, begin with the site and location. Now that most folks have been out there, they'll understand what we're proposing and where it is. Get into some of the project overview and conceptual site design, and also some of the fundamentals and timeline. Discuss economic benefits and fiscal attributes of the project, both in the region and in the state. And we'll work through some of the permitting processes already been described. Again, the Energy Commission being the lead CEQA agency, we're also in close collaboration with Kern County and other state and federal process regulatory agencies as part of the process. And more than happy to answer any and all Q and A's we go forward. Next slide. I'd like to invite our CEO and co-founder, Kirk Van Wellingen, to present the next couple of slides. As he's been around since our inception, we've had a very rapid growth, and we're quite excited about the future of advanced compressed air energy storage and our project here at Willow Rock, and there's nobody better to tell that story than Kirk Van Wellingen.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Kirk, and to the hearing officer, commissioners, staff, advisors, and all stakeholders. Really appreciate the opportunity to come and share more about this project with you. So a little bit about Hydrostor. I started the company in 2010. I was working at a nuclear and wind generator, had trouble balancing wind and solar, tried to build Pumped Hydro, realized how much water that took and how challenging it is to permit. And then I was introduced to a gentleman who had this idea, taking compressed air, which has been operating for about 60 years at the hundreds of megawatts level in Europe as well as the United States, about making two changes to it to make it far more applicable and help with the energy transition. So I was pretty intrigued. I got to know him over a while. I ultimately left my job, became a co-founder, and we started the business, like I say, in 2010. We're based in Toronto, Canada. We have an office in Australia, as well as a growing team, and we're going to have to find an office space here in California as we continue to grow. We have built two facilities already, two smaller facilities. We built one in downtown Toronto with Toronto Hydro, right across from an elementary school, a 1-megawatt, 1-megawatt-hour demonstration plant. We ran that, we put that in the service in 2015, ran that for five years, really optimized our technology. We then got a commercial contract for an 8-megawatt-hour facility in the town of Goderidge, across the street from residential neighborhood and a church, and we constructed that, put it in the service in 2019. And that's been operating now for three years, very reliably, very quiet, and with a lot of stakeholder support from the neighbors. So now that we demonstrated that our technology has a lot of merit, it is a lot more dense and can do a lot of things that Pumped Hydro can't, and it's a lot lower cost than batteries and lasts much longer. We were backed by Goldman Sachs Asset Management and the Canadian Pension Plan to go and build a flagship project for the world to see and to really show what it can do to build a business to try to help the globe transition. That is this project, the Willow Rock project that we want to build with everybody's support, and we want to be a big portion of this community and have people come from around the world to tour the facility and to not only create a lot of local economic development, but also support California pretty large. And we are building a series of projects behind that, but really this being a flagship. So with that, one more slide where I'll walk through the technology and how it works. If I could have the next slide, please. So the way our facility works, and the video may do it a little bit better than I can, there's really four steps in the process. The first one is you compress atmospheric air. So it just pulls in air from the atmosphere and runs it through an air compressor. Same compressors are used in many different industries. They've been built and operated for many decades. That pressurizes the air, it gets very dense. As you compress that air, it gets hot, just like your mic pump would heat up when you compress air into the tire. Typically, a conventional compressed air would just waste that heat. What we do is we take the air, run it through a shell and tube heat exchanger to pull the heat out of the air and store it in hot water, and it gets up to about 200 degrees C. So now the air's been cooled down to about 30, 40 degrees Celsius. It then gets sent through an airline, about 12-inch airlines, 2,000 feet underground, to a cavern that we've hauled out. And as Curtis mentioned at the site tour, the total volume for this facility, which would be by far the largest facility in California, stores... would be by far the largest facility in California storing energy, is about a football field cube. It's done through a series of smaller tunnels, all underneath our burial footprint. And so as the air comes and starts filling the top of the cavern, water that has otherwise filled the cavern is displaced and lifted up to the surface, and spills into that surface pond. That pond is very small relative to pumped hydro, about 2% to 3% of the water compared to an equivalent pumped hydro plant, and we make up for the evaporative losses through when you compress air and drops water out. And so when this facility is fully charged, you have hot water, 200 degrees C, in a steel tank under pressure, wrapped in insulation, and air in the cavern that's kept under pressure by that water head up to the surface, and a valve holds it in. You can leave it there for days, weeks, and then when the grid needs power, that valve opens up, the weight of the water starts bringing that air back to the surface. It goes in reverse through the shell and tube heat exchanger, heats up again, and then goes through an air turbine. It's very similar to like a steam turbine, but it just pushes hot air, spins a fan, and the air goes back to the atmosphere. So that's how it works. It only uses air, rock, and water. Very simple, very compact, and very robust and long-life. These caverns, there's hundreds of these hard rock caverns used for other purposes across the United States, 60, 70 years of operation, and they're still working perfectly fine. Very few, if any, have been shut down due to structural integrity. The equipment is all made by the largest OEMs in the world, the Siemens, GE, Man Turbo, come with long-term warranties. So a very reliable system. We've proven the process at a small scale. We have insurance from the largest insurance companies that will guarantee its operation. We've lined up some of the biggest EPC companies to build it for us, putting their reputation in law and value sheet on the line to guarantee the construction. So that's the technology. We have patented it as our, as our company, and the real, the two big innovations that we brought to conventional compressed air, all we do that's different from those plants that have been running for 60, 70 years, is one, we store the heat instead of wasting it and burning natural gas, because you have to preheat air before it goes through the turbine, otherwise it'll ice up. So they would burn some natural gas to preheat the air. We store enough heat in hot water, reuse that to preheat the air. And the second is they would typically only build them where there was salt caverns, because salt is airtight, and they would pressurize it like a scuba tank and make it really high pressure. We brought this hydrostatic compensation, this idea of using water to backfill the pressure to keep it very low pressure, so it doesn't stress the rock. And that's used in many different mining applications. So we've just brought things from adjacent industries to a very proven asset class to ultimately what we think is an important technology to help with the energy transition. So that's a little bit about HydroStore and the technology. I believe the next slide should trigger a video, as Curtis mentioned, about a four-minute video walking through the technology, and hopefully it makes a bit more sense.
... captured by the thermal management system for later reuse. This adiabatic process, which uses sensible heat storage, increases overall efficiency and eliminates the need for fossil fuels during operation. Once the heat is extracted, the compressed air is sent underground and stored in purpose-built caverns where it is hydrostatically compensated, displacing water up the shaft and into the closed-loop reservoir. The system is now fully charged, capable of delivering power on demand over a standby period ranging from hours to days. When power is required, hydrostatic pressure forces the compressed air to the surface. It is reheated by the thermal management system, reusing the heat from compression and expanded through the turbine to generate electricity on demand. No fuels are used in the process, resulting in zero emissions. This method of charging and discharging significantly reduces water and land requirements, removes sighting constraints, and resulting in minimal environmental impact. HydroStore Advanced Case is as reliable as pumped hydropower, but without the geographic or sighting constraints. The key benefits of HydroStore Advanced Compressed Air Energy Storage are: full-scale, long-duration energy storage, delivering hundreds of megawatts and four to 24 hours of duration; low installed cost per kilowatt hour with no fuel costs; no hazardous chemicals or use of fossil fuels; a proprietary-built air accumulator allows for flexible project sighting; system life up to 50 years with effective unlimited cycling; built entirely from bankable equipment from tier-one OEM suppliers with decades of proven operation, providing low development risk through performance guarantees and bonding availability; charge, discharge, and storage capacity are set independently to optimize system design; synchronous generation provides rotational inertia supporting electrical grid stability and resiliency; the system also delivers voltage support, spinning reserve, black start, and frequency response; adiabatic process reuses heat from compression resulting in enhanced ground-trip efficiency. HydroStore's technology is uniquely suited to help address electricity system needs or dispatchable capacity, including fossil plant and mine repurposing, as well as renewable integration, transmission defer, and behind-the-meter or remote applications for mines and large industrial operations. HydroStore: Advanced Compressed Air Energy Storage.
It's readily available online. Next, we'd like to move into a more in-depth discussion of Willow Rock itself. The, as we stated out at the site, we are located at the corner of Sweetser and Tatchby Willow Springs Road, northeast side, around the, the escarpment of the Willow Springs Butte, and again, the reason behind that, that volcanic intrusion there is the likely host of a geologic formation that would be satisfactory for us to locate our underground caverns. That's a long way of saying we need very hard, very low permeability, very low porosity rock formations, geologic formations, at our target cavern depths of approximately 2,000 feet. So given that volcanic feature, that's why we located at this location, some 10 miles away from the Whirlwind substation. Ideally, we'd be right next to the substation, but geologically speaking, this made more sense to us to locate it here next to this Butte. And as you've seen out at the site, the cores that we are currently pulling out of that, those bore holes are looking very promising as a, as a granitic formation at depth. We're currently sighted on 70 acres. Next slide, please. The transmission line that we drove along to at least get out to Whirlwind Substation. Again, we have a preferred route, which is real hard to see here. It's in black. It runs through the middle of a number of new solar projects being built in the vicinity of existing solar projects, and ends up running close to some existing wind turbines. So obviously, a very prolific renewable energy resource region, and we're very excited to be proposing to be part of that with a long-term storage solution that can maximize the benefit, value, and reliability of the grid to the ratepayers and consumers of California. We, we also surveyed and are proposing at least as alternates additional routes to make sure there's some flexibility in all going forward. Our primary point of interconnect is to the Southern California Basin Whirlwind Substation. Los Angeles Department of Water and Power has also proposed a Rosemont Substation just south of Rosemont Boulevard, and they're LADWP's large right-of-way. That is, we understand moving forward and may provide a potential opportunity, but we're uncertain on the timing, so our primary interconnect at this point is into Whirlwind. Well, these, this presentation will be documented. I realize this is probably hard for most folks to read, so I'll kind of summarize it. Again, we're located obviously near Rosemont, 500-megawatt, eight-hour storage facility. Again, that is on the order of 10 times bigger than an average battery facility in terms of megawatt-hours of storage. That's 4,000 megawatt-hours of storage. 500 megawatts is roughly the capacity for 350,000 to 400,000 homes. So by any measure, it's a very significant resource for California. Some of the development activities, again, we do have site control, are Phase II studies from the California Independent System Operator, the transmission operator in the state. This project has received full deliverability, which is a very high threshold for developers to, to get over in order to advance into a full interconnect into the grid in California. RAFC was submitted in December and was deemed date-adequate by the Energy Commission last month in July. We are very pleased to advise that we are making very good commercial progress with respective customers' offtake for the project, and California is in desperate need of not only this project, but literally many, many more like it, dozens more like it. The Public Utilities Commission of California issued a procurement order in approximately a year ago dictating load-serving entities to secure in excess of 11,000 megawatts of new capacity. Most of that is back, or most of that is storage capacity, and 1,000 megawatts of that mandate was for long duration. We are, again, considered long-duration energy storage with our eight-hour storage capacity. So we will fill a significant portion of that, but again, 500 megawatts overall versus a procurement order of 11,000, we, we have a lot of, a long way to go in California to enhance our reliability. We expect to be online currently in the first half of 2028. Again, there's a more detailed schedule in the presentation. The Energy Commission process, we're looking at just over a year. There are additional local, state, and federal permits that will be secured, and here looking at commencing construction first of 2024. It's a very extensive construction process, both underground and, and surface activities. It will last slightly more than four years. So we are moving very quickly, but nonetheless, still only reaching commercial operation in the first half of 2028. So we're anxious to get started on all of these facets, beginning obviously with development and permitting. Next slide, please. Again, this is a difficult slide to read, but it does depict a preliminary site layout for the facility. Our compressors and turboexpanders being located on the top of the parcel, our sub, our switch station, switching station, substation to the west of the main turbine hall. Our heat exchangers and spheres, thermal storage, will be located on the east, and the hydrostatic compensation reservoir currently slated for the west. We are currently in the process of optimizing our layout and our design with our engineering and construction contractor, and making progress in terms of enhancing efficiency, reducing costs, improving performance. So we are still making some tweaks to that design, and we view that as ongoing optimization. We don't expect any major changes at this point, but this is a preliminary design, and we are still looking to optimize the overall performance. Next slide. Again, this is a visual rendering of that same site layout. This is looking to the northeast. We were located today, for those on the site tour, just out by those, out by those white spheres on the site. Sweetser Road is the dirt road we took to the east, and Willow Springs Butte is to our south. Next slide. Couple of visual renderings as laid out today. Again, the top rendering, looking from the north down to Tatchby Willow Springs Road. You can see the thermal storage tanks to the left and the turbine hall to the right. Another rendering from Hamilton Road, which is from the west looking east, and again, a fairly modest visual impact. We're looking at tallest structures on the site on the order of 80 to 90 feet at this point. Next slide. Some of the project fundamentals. We do have land control secured for under a 75-year lease. We expect the commercial and design life of the facility will be 50 years or more, and that's an important comparison when we're looking at batteries from a, from a state and global perspective. We're not against batteries. We need all technologies, quite honestly, to get to this 11 megawatts and beyond of procurement, but it's important to recognize that each technology has its own benefits and drawbacks. Batteries typically last for 10 years, plus or minus now, decline at a fairly rapid flip annually in terms of their capacity. So replacing batteries every year, that has a cost. We don't have that degradation or need to replace major equipment. We're just like a major power plant, we're there and commercially viable for a very extended lifespan. Our interconnect will be at 230 KB into Whirlwind, and again, we've also proposed a potential route south along the LADWP right-of-way into Rosemont at a future date, but our primary focus at this point is into Whirlwind. Our water needs, again, for our one-time reservoir charge will be on the order of 450 to 500 acre-feet. That is not, we're not requiring potable water for any of our water needs. We can use non-potable water, and that will be our preferred source. This is an adjudicated water basin here in Antelope Valley that's clear to all involved. We will be securing water rights commercially for any and all water production that we will be using at our site, both for the initial fill and any periodic water needs made for, required at the site for makeup or other purposes. So again, I described on-site, 500 acres typical agricultural uses out here will be one and a half to three feet of water per acre depending on crops. So this, this is the equivalent of something on the order of 200 acres of agricultural production for a year, and that's what our initial charge would equate to in water use terms. We also, one of our interesting facets and very attractive facets is that we actually produce fresh water out of thin air in our compression process. I'm not aware of too many other folks that can say under oath that they're producing fresh water out of thin air, but I could do so today. We, we do during the compression process, remove that relative humidity in the atmosphere, condense it into fresh water, and re-use it in our process. Depending on the ambient conditions and the hours of the year that we operate, our capacity factor, our net water use or consumption is dependent on those two factors. The more we operate, the more water we produce. The more humid the air is, the more water we produce. Converse is true as well. We expect, based on a number of assumptions, that we will have a very small annual makeup requirement currently. We're still refining some of the numbers, and we expect an annual makeup water requirement of 20 to 60 acre-feet per year. And again, if we operate more, that'll be less. If it's more humid, it'll be less. If it's drier, it'll be on the higher end of that range. So it will be a bit of a annual true-up, if you will, given both operating capacity factor and weather, but we will be producing water. The project that we are proposing in San Luis Obispo, Kenny, that's actually a negative number. We're going to be producing water annually as currently envisioned, given their humidity and temperature is greater than Antelope Valley. The expected geology, again, corresponds to a granite, a granitic formation. You saw some of the samples out there today. We're very pleased with the geologic formation feedback that we've been getting to date. And that work will continue forward. The cavern volume, as we discussed on-site, is on the order of a million cubic yards or a football field cube. We intend to use the majority of that rock We intend to use the majority of that rock on site for our reservoir and other onsite civil requirements. We also have described an opportunity at the Ridgeline Quarry, about four or five miles up the road from us. They, it would be a potential host for any additional waste rock, either to put on site or, as I mentioned, as a potential source for reuse as aggregate or other commercial uses. We will be designing the project to meet all local county and CDC and other noise standards. We've got the most qualified engineering team that we can find currently refining these designs and we're confident we can exceed all the stringent standards. And importantly, as we discussed, we are not using natural gas to reheat this air. If you expand air without reheating it, it actually freezes up into chunks of ice and it will blow up a turboexpander. So traditionally, folks have used natural gas to reheat that, as mentioned. We don't need that with our patented technology, so we are emissions-free and that is a great benefit of our technology. Some of the economic benefits for the state and the region. The current installed cost is currently in excess of $1 billion, so it's a very significant investment by any stretch. The average workforce is on the order of 250 construction workers. We expect that construction to, again, last in excess of four years, both subsurface and surface construction. P workforce on the order of 700, we expect currently. The total construction labor required is on the order of 2 million man-hours. And just to give a frame of reference for that number, having developed two, two-by-one combined cycle power plants here in California myself, that number is most typically 1 million man-hours required to build a 600-megawatt two-by-one combined cycle facility. So this is on the order of twice as much labor required to build a similar-sized facility at a traditional natural gas-fired facility. The full-time O and M positions inside the fence, we expect to be 25 to 40 full-time positions. Lot more additional part-time work for maintenance and the like. And fiscal benefits, our analysis has identified well over $500 million in regional direct and indirect economic impacts. Also a very significant contribution to the county of state tax base. All that solar out there today is, we're not exempted from property taxes as most of that solar is, so this will be a significant resource for new property taxes. And we are committed, as mentioned by Kirk previously, this is our flagship project. We're very proud of that and we are committed to making it a success for each and every person in this room and everyone in this community and county, quite honestly. We envision this as being not just a local attraction for folks to come see the new project. This is a needle reaper for California, for the United States, and globally. The ability for this project to be a success and expand both in California and beyond, we expect this to be a very popular tour for folks to come and see how a case works, how it can be used in other countries, in other states, other markets. So we're going to make, we're going to put our first best foot forward from day one. And we're quite proud of the project and we'll work to make it a success for all involved. Next slide. The Energy Commission process has been described quite, quite well already today, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. The jurisdictional nature of the Energy Commission, again, we've been deemed a thermal power plant, 15 megawatts or larger in size, so we are jurisdictional under the Energy Commission regulations. Timeline, again, submitted our AFC in December, deemed data adequate last month. CEC is the lead agency under CECL, but we're participating closely with local, state, and federal agencies in tandem with that. And again, in closing, we're very committed to making this a success for all involved. Thank you for your time, attention. Questions now, later? We're happy to answer questions at your discretion.
Thank you, Mr. Hillerbrand. I think we will take questions later after we've moved through the staff's presentation. I thank you for that presentation. I did want to just take a moment. Apparently, there's an individual who's a governmental representative who missed the opportunity to introduce himself. He's on Zoom. Ms. Murray, can you help him come onto the webinar?
Thank you, Officer Webster Hawkins. Gregory Wood. unmute on your end, you may begin your comment. That's Gregory Wood. You could unmute on your end. You may give your introduction. He is unable to unmute at this time.
All right, next slide, please. So the question is for Steph, about how long do you think your presentation is? We're wondering if now would be a good time for a break or later?
A pair of presentations is not that long. If you start getting to the individual topic area, then that is going to take maybe...
The court reporter, this exchange is not really audible over the Zoom.
Elias Lake. Thank you, court reporter. We're making sure the mics are on now.
Chala, go ahead and repeat that.
So from what I understand, the presentation slides are short, but the discussion could be extended.
It could be an extended discussion.
Then what I would recommend, President Member Licaro, is that we do take a break right now. It's a good time to do that. So I will recommend that we take a 15-minute break. 10? 10, all right, 10, to move through the proceedings. Hopefully, that gives everyone a chance to stretch and then resume. We will resume at 6:02.
We're here with the CEO of Hydrostore. And I'm anxious to know how we got 250 million out of Goldman Sachs and how hard it was.
You know, I'm not even sure that was the hardest part of the journey. But inventing the technology 13 years ago and trying to get venture capital money in the early days when we were open and forthright saying it's going to be a 10-year journey.
Right.
I said, our fund is only a five-year fund or an eight-year fund. But we did it with some committed venture capitalists and it was really, the Goldman Sachs team got excited because we'd proven it at the small scale, got the ability to insure and wrap it. And then we had planted our flag on some of these big projects. And the utilities, the forward-thinking utilities and community choice aggregators in California came out to us and said, we're willing to give you guys contracts. We've seen enough. And they were the missing piece. We had the technology proven at small scale. We now had the customers willing and they were bold enough and have enough capital that they were willing to get behind, you know, a team of 30 of us at the time and supercharge it. That was roughly a year ago they got behind us. And now we're off to the races with this flagship project being our crown jewel.
Uh-huh, yeah. Well, it's exciting. Everybody you can see that hears about it is excited about it. Hoping it works.
Air, rock, and water. It's simple and I like, I'm an engineer by training, so simple is better. Very few moving parts in this system, so we're really excited about it. Hope all the stakeholders and communities see it the same way we do. We're committed to make sure we answer all their questions.
How do you keep the air in the cavern down below? Is it that tight?
It is. I don't know if you had, got a chance to see, but it's effectively granite down there, just like your countertops. And the pressure, what we call the drive pressure of the air, is very nominal, about 10 PSI. So imagine trying to push air through granite for 2,000 feet. That's what you'd have to do to leak the air out. But if it did leak, it's just air. So it's not bad, but very, very little losses in terms of air.
I see.
And the hot water, we keep in big tanks, wrapped in very good insulation, and that can stay there as a thermal mass for many days as well.
Sure, well, thank you very much and best of luck with it.
Thank you.
And I'll let you get back to your snack.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Have you met everybody? Have you met the Hydrostore people?
Some of them.
Some of them, okay.
Some of them, not all of them.
Russell, do you know the Rosemont News?
Yes.
Yeah, hi.
We missed you at the, at the...
I didn't know about it.
The Armec News.
The Armec?
Yeah.
I was there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then you saw the presentation last week, July?
I did. I saw the complete presentation.
Yeah, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, it's up on YouTube.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't remember seeing it, but...
Yeah.
It was, I was also two days after surgery. And it's been three weeks now, so two days after.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
You already know how to find me.
I do know how to find you, Jeff, now.
So what do you think, Lord Mike?
No, I don't want to be...
Don't you want to give a...
I forgot to tell you, I did something to my eyes, so I don't want to be on video. Forgot to tell you. It doesn't hurt and I went to the doctor yesterday, but it's ugly.
Hi, Eric Knight.
Hi, Eric.
All righty, wonderful. So Eric's not going to come to the podium because he's in the cloud. But thank you for joining us, Mr. Knight. And so as you begin, please reintroduce yourself for the record and spell your last name for the benefit of the court reporter. And so with that, we'll move on to the staff's presentation.
All right, thank you. My name is Eric Knight, for the court reporter, that's spelled E-R-I-C-K-N-I-G-H-T. I'm the manager of the Siding Environmental Office at the Energy Commission. As Commissioner Licaro had said at the start of the meeting, it's been a few years since we've had an event like this and I'm really sorry to only be participating remotely. So I hope I'm coming through clearly and, and hopefully this goes off successfully, Eric. So the Siding Environmental Office is responsible for organizing the staff's participation in an application for certification proceeding and preparing portions of the staff's environmental assessment document. The remainder of the documents prepared by staff in our engineering office and my staff pulls it all together into one, one key cohesive document. We've got quite a few technical staff on Zoom tonight that are available answering questions that the committee or the public may have. So my presentation will explain the certification process and staff's role in reviewing an application. And I apologize if there's some overlap with hearing officer Webster Hawkins's presentation, but if you're hearing all this for the first time tonight, probably hearing things twice is helping. It takes a little while for this thing to... Next slide. Okay, so this is probably stating the obvious, but the application for certification first must be filed with the Energy Commission. Upon filing the application, the first order of business for staff is to review that application for certification, which I'll probably just refer to as an AFC or application for short. So we, the first order of business for us is to review the application, determine whether it's complete or not. And we have a set of information requirements in our regulations. And so we review the application against those, the criteria. And then the CEC's executive director must file a recommendation within 30 days of receipt of the application with the recommendation of it being complete or incomplete. Ultimately, the decider of whether the application for certification is complete rests with the commissioners. So for this project, the Willa Rock applicant filed his AFC, you heard, on December 1st, 2021. Staff filed its first data adequacy recommendation on December 30th, 2021. That recommendation was the application at times incomplete. And the commission voted its January 26, 2022 business meeting to accept that recommendation and adopted the list of deficiencies that staff had identified. So between April 25, 2022 and June 28, 2022, the applicant filed a series of supplemental application materials to correct the deficiencies. And then staff filed its second data adequacy recommendation on July 1st, 2022. And at that time, the recommendation was that it was, that application was complete, data adequate, and that recommendation was scheduled for a vote by the commission at its July 13, 2022 business meeting. So that effectively then started the application for certification process, once that application was deemed complete. So once an application is deemed complete, staff begins what's called discovery. Well, I should say, before we launch into discovery, what we do is we send out notices of that application that we received it. We send those notices to property owners. We send notices to interested agencies and we post a notice in local newspapers. So all that information is in the, in the docket. The notice of receipt of the application was filed by staff in February. The agency participation letter was sent out in March. And then advertisements for Rod and the Rosemont News and El Popular, a Spanish-language paper in April. So then what staff does is we start reviewing the application. We're in what we call the discovery phase. This includes consultations with agencies at the local, state, federal level, consultation or at least outreach at first to California Native American tribes to determine if they're interested in consulting with the Energy Commission. Staff conducts its own independent research and conducts field visits. On the slide here, I just sort of highlighted that step right there in the process. That's where we're at right now. For the Willa Rock projects, staff has issued one set of data requests. So an application for certification could use a lot of information, but it's, it's not all the information that staff may need to analyze the proposed project. Every project is unique and so there are unique issues that need to be addressed. And so staff will have a number of questions on the project. For Willa Rock, staff filed its first set of data requests on July 26, 2022. This set of data requests covers the top areas of air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, alternatives, biological resources, geological hazards and resources, land use, noise, paleontological resources, project description, transportation and transmission system engineering. So after, so, so... So with, with the information that staff obtains from the application itself in response to staff's data requests and additional information that staff is gaining through its own research and consultation efforts with agencies and reviewing comments that may be filed in the docket, staff will prepare and publish its preliminary staff assessment. The PSA, as all are referred to it, looks very much like an EIR, which you may be more familiar with. It will evaluate the project's effects on the environment, assess the adequacy of the mitigation measures if any are proposed. We will propose to modify or those mitigation measures or propose additional mitigation measures as necessary and also... and also assess the project's compliance with all applicable laws, ordinances, regulations, and standards. This PSA will also include an assessment of any feasible alternatives to the proposed project or to its location that could avoid or reduce any of the significant project effects. Next slide. So there will be a minimum of a 30-day public comment period on the PSA. Staff will hold a public workshop on the PSA to take comments from the public, agencies, tribes, and the applicant. Most likely that workshop will be held in the project location. Most likely be available, you know, have remote access as well. So the next step is for staff to prepare... Oh, excuse me. So the next step after the PSA is released and we hold a public workshop and take comments is for staff to prepare and publish the final staff assessment. And again, this is very much like the final EIR. It will include responses to written comments received on the PSA and any necessary revisions to the environmental analysis. So the FSA will serve as staff's testimony at the evidentiary hearing that will be held by the committee at a further later date to receive expert testimony from the formal parties to the proceeding on any disputed topic areas. The formal parties to the proceeding are staff and the applicant and any intervenors, excuse me. I will note that the California used for reliable energy sure filed a request to intervene today. And, you know, no decision has been made on that request for intervention, but there is a potential intervenor in this case, and that is true. And they would have the same rights as the other formal parties in the proceeding, staff and applicant to present witnesses and other parties' witnesses. So at the evidentiary hearing, the committee will also take public comment. At the conclusion of the evidentiary hearing portion of the process, the committee will issue its proposed decision, which you heard earlier is to either approve or deny the AFC. There is a minimum 30-day public comment period on the proposed decision. And at the conclusion of the comment period, the committee will make its recommendations to the full commission, which will load a notice business meeting to approve, deny, or modify the committee's proposed decision. And there's a 10-day minimum notice for that meeting. Next slide, please. So this slide here captures in a nutshell staff's role in an AFC proceeding. It's important to point out, you heard this earlier from the hearing officer, that staff is an independent party in the AFC proceeding, that is, staff is independent from the committee and independent from the applicant. Staff maintains experts in all the environmental topic areas that are covered in an assessment of the California Environmental Quality Act as well as experts in the engineering aspects, safety aspects, and the thermal power plant. Now, the staff provides an objective analysis of the proposed project's effects on the environment and its compliance with laws, ordinances, regulations, and standards. So to summarize staff's role, we consult with agencies and tribes in our evaluation of the project. We prepare objective, un-biased environmental assessments. We issue public notices and request the agencies for the review and input. We conduct public workshops, and we present expert witness testimony appearance. Next slide, please. I think I have one slide. Could you go back one slide, sorry? One here, thank you. So as you can see from this slide, these are the topic areas covered in our staff assessment. You'll see they look very similar to what's in an EIR, although we combined some of the topics. For instance, typical topics like population and housing, public services, and recreation are covered in one single topic on socioeconomics. What is different is the engineering topics, and those are all grouped at the end of that second column. You won't see those normally in a KIA. Now, we're going to do one more slide. So you heard this also, every AFC proceeding in the CEC gets its own dedicated webpage. Right here is a screen capture of the Willow Rock... Well, it's the Willow Rock page, but it's labeled Gem Energy Storage Center since the project name has just changed. We'll need to update that. But you'll see, on this slide, we just give some callouts for certain features that are on the website, on the webpage, like the contact information for staff's project manager, the United's Payne. From here, one can access the docket blog, which is the repository of all official documents filed in the proceeding. Like, you know, hearing officer's description of it is a file cabinet. It's great, electronic file cabinet. And also the links for making comments and signing up for the list or know more about this on the CEC's public advisor. Thank you for listening, that was my presentation.
Thank you for that, Mr. Knight. Next, we'll turn to the Public Advisor's Office presentation, and I'm going to invite Ms. Mariney to the podium to deliver her presentation detailing the public advisor's role in assisting the public with participating in the Willow Rock application for certification.
I've got a real quick question first before Dorothy makes her presentation. So I thought that was really helpful, what Mr. Knight just presented. But I was curious about whether or not we were going to hear more from staff about some of the specific requests that were made by the committee for discussion in terms of issues identification. So does that happen later, or is that going to happen now? So I just wanted to make sure for my understanding and for anyone who might have read what the committee put out for expectations for this proceeding, when in sequence that's going to happen.
Absolutely. So after the public advisor finishes her presentation, we're going to have two sessions which are more discussion-oriented. And the first will be around the issues identified by staff and the applicant's response to that. And the second discussion will be around the schedule of issues that staff has described and the applicant's response to that. So what I'm hoping for is that staff will address those details that you just mentioned, Commissioner Picar, at that time. All right. Apologies, Ms. Mariney. What's going on?
Thank you, hearing officer Webster Hawkins, Commissioner Picar. Hello, everyone, my name is Dorothy Mariney. Could you go to the previous slide? Apologies. Hello, everyone, my name is Dorothy Mariney. I work for the Office of the Public Advisor, Energy Equity and Public Affairs. I'm here today representing the public advisor to help inform the public about how to navigate and participate in this Gem Energy Storage Center proceeding. Also, also referred to as Gem. Next slide. The CEC values public participation and wants to hear from an array of stakeholders with different perspectives because having a robust record helps the committee in a thoroughly informed decision. Sometimes state processes may be confusing, but the CEC's Office of the Public Advisor, Energy Equity and Public Affairs, is here to provide guidance and functions as a bridge between the public and the Energy Commission. Our mission is to ensure that any member of the public can participate meaningfully in the CEC's proceedings, such as today's informational hearing. Please reach out with any questions for guidance via email. Email us at publicadviser@energy.ca.gov or call us at 916-957-7910. We respond to both emails and calls within 24 hours. And as you can see, there's a QR code on the slide that'll take you to the webpage of the Office of the Public Advisor. Next slide. The CEC reaches out to local and state officials, tribal officials, and members of schools, nonprofit groups, community organizations, property owners, and members of the public to disseminate information about this project. The channels we use to conduct outreach include local media forums, social media, email blasts, and the CEC's subscription list. Next slide. There are several key takeaways for you to know how to best participate. There are two main ways to participate. The first is informal, like other members of the public, due to, due for any CEC event. The other way is formal, as an intervener who becomes a party to the proceeding. I'll review both these processes in the next slides. Whether you're participating in a formal manner, the format of the meetings will be either in-person or virtual or hybrid. Most of the time, we'll aim to make our meetings hybrid to increase accessibility. Another key takeaway is the CEC provides special accommodations, modifications, and translation and interpretation services upon request for any proceeding. Please contact the Public Advisor's Office as soon as possible to request these services and preferably at least five days in advance. We'll always make more diligently to accommodate all respective requests. Next slide. As I mentioned, there are two key takeaways, two key ways to participate in AFC proceedings. Informal, as a member of the public, like you would in any other CEC event, and formal, as an intervener. I'll start explaining the formal approach. The formal approach to participate in AFC proceedings is to become an intervener. An intervener is a person or group that is a party to the proceedings, like any other party to the proceeding. An intervener may present evidence and witnesses, object to other parties' evidence, cross-examine other witnesses, and file motions. To become an intervener, you must file a petition to intervene. No specific form has to be filed. However, there is specific information needed in your application, such as contact information, the docket number, and your interest to participate, among other things. On request, the public advisor can provide a sample petition to intervene. You would then submit this information to the docket. In this case, 21-AFC-02. You do not need to be an attorney nor have legal representation to be an intervener. We emphasize that even if you're not sure whether you want to become an intervener or even if you do not end up participating at all in the proceeding, it is best to go ahead and file so that you don't miss key deadlines and opportunities to engage. Once you do submit, the assigned committee will consider the petition and make a determination about it within 30 days. Please reach out to the Office of the Public Advisor, Energy Equity and Public Affairs for assistance with your application to intervene. For formal participation, it is important to review ex parte rules. They dictate that all decisions made in this case will be made solely on evidence contained within the public record. Contact between interested parties and members of the committee regarding any substantive matters must occur in a public forum or and will be distributed to all parties and made publicly. Next slide. No off-the-record contact regarding substantive matters is permitted to take place between interested parties and this committee, commissioners, their advisors, or the hearing officer. The purpose of these rules is to provide disclosure to all interested persons, organizations, and the parties of any information that may be used as a basis for future decision on this project. Next slide. The other option to participate in AFC proceedings is informal, as a member of the public, like you would in any other CEC event. It is important to attend the various events related to this proceeding to maximize your opportunity to participate. There will also be several ways for you to share your comments in this proceeding. For example, in every event of the Gem proceeding, which as today's informational hearing, such as today's informational hearing, time will be carved out specifically for a public comment. And that is your operative opportunity as a member of the public to provide your comments about the issues related to this proceeding, speaking directly to the parties and attendees of the event. If you're unable to join an event, the public advisor can provide your comments on your behalf. You need to email or call in your comments prior to the start of the event. Finally, you may file written comments through our docket system to be included in the record. You can submit them directly into the docket, which will show you how to do. You can also email them to the docket unit, but the preference is to submit them directly into the docket. You can always reach out to the public advisor to help with this process. Next slide. I'll now provide you instructions on ways to participate in a written form. First, I'd like to emphasize that whether you decide to engage in this proceeding as a member of the public or an intervener, we highly recommend you go to the Gem Project webpage to obtain the most current information about the Gem proceeding. On the screen, you'll see what the webpage looks like. The red arrow points to the link where anyone can submit electronic comments. The blue area points to the e-filing link, which is preferred pathway for staff and parties to the proceeding to submit material. And the first green arrow points to the docket log link. The docket log is a repository for the documents filed by all parties to the proceeding and for public comments, as mentioned earlier. Basically, it's where you will find all the materials submitted for this proceeding. The second green arrow is a section where you will sign up for the Gem subscription, formerly known as Listerv. This is a lifeline for the proceeding. Additionally, this webpage also contains contact information for staff who can answer more questions about the Gem proceeding and contains contact information for the Office of the Public Advisor, Energy Equity and Tribal Affairs. If you need assistance with any of these processes, please contact the public advisor. Next, next slide. Now here's a look at what, as mentioned earlier, the, no, previous slide? Thank you. As mentioned earlier, the name of this project will change, and this is a reflection of what this page may look like with those changes in effect. The page will reflect the name, Willow Rock Energy Storage Center, and as will the subscription cage as well. Next slide. Signing up for Gem's proceedings subscription or Listerv is a voluntary procedure. We highly recommend this because it's the most effective way to receive the most current information about this proceeding. This includes alerts about what is happening in the proceeding and notifications about material that has been docketed. Signing up for the subscription is a quick process. First, you'll go through the project webpage noted here. Then you'll scroll down the webpage. You'll find a box that looks like this one on the slide titled Subscribe Gem Energy Storage Center. Enter your email address, then click Subscribe. You'll see a message saying you have successfully subscribed to CEC Gem Energy Storage Center for California Natural Resources Agency. Click Finish. Next, you'll see the privacy policy. Review that and click on the next box and close out. You'll also receive emails showing you that you have subscribed successfully to CEC Gem Energy Storage Center. And if you do this successfully, you will then receive emails with the latest material notifying you about the Gem proceeding. The next slide shows you, the next slide, as mentioned before, shows you what this will look like with the changes to the name. Next slide. Today's the first informational hearing for this proceeding with a schedule and a schedule with specific dates for the rest of the proceeding is forthcoming. You'll be able to look at these materials on our webpages, and you'll receive emails, email notifications, and alerts when you sign up for the subscription. Now, I want to emphasize a few significant opportunities you'll have to participate. As mentioned earlier, as mentioned earlier by staff, there are staff workshops, publications of staff's preliminary and final staff assessments, pre-hearing conference, and evidentiary hearings, presiding member proposed decision, commission decision, and finally, a commission decision at the CEC business meeting. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. This presentation will be later found in the docket. And back to you, hearing officer Webster Hawkins.
Thank you very, very much, Ms. Mariney. Hopefully, everyone appreciates how firmly everyone at the Energy Commission believes in public participation. We've heard from the presiding member, the associate member, from staff, and from the public advisor. I want to underscore just a couple of highlights that Ms. Mariney just made. So first, about notices and other documents in the docket. Ms. Mariney just showed you how to obtain information about the proposed project. Now, the Energy Commission does maintain a mailing list and uses US mail to send out all notices. And as Mr. Knight mentioned, notices were sent to property owners as well as tribal government leaders. However, if you don't live near the project site, you won't likely be on the mailing list unless you were already specifically asked. And even if you are on the mailing list, you will not receive most of the documents filed into the docket other than those notices required by law or the committee's general order, those that are required to be mailed. So all the documents... So all the documents that have been described that parties and other participants can file, you will not receive those via U.S. mail. And additionally, U.S. mail takes more time to get to you, so we do encourage you to sign up for the Listserve if you want to see all of the documents that are filed in this case. Second, Ms. Morini is correct that there is no CEC form required for filing a request to become an intervenor. However, there are required pieces of information that are necessary to be included in your request to become an intervenor. You must submit a written request to the committee that expresses your interest in intervening, describes your particular interest in the case, and specifies a particular subject or interest you may have, such as air quality, public health, environmental justice, et cetera. So again, if you would like more information on becoming an intervenor, please do contact the Public Advisor's Office to assist you. And lastly, the scheduling order that will be published on August 26th will establish the deadline for filing the petition to intervene. Intervening early will allow you to participate more in the proceedings, and the Public Advisor can assist you. With that, next slide, please. Thank you. So it is important to the Commission that the public participate. The Commission is committed to justice, access, equity, diversity, and inclusion in all of its proceedings programs, including maximizing public access to the Willa Rock AFC. You don't have to be an intervenor to participate in our process or to comment on the proposed project. However, public comments are not considered evidence. You've heard that the final decision by the CEC will be based on facts and evidence, and that the evidentiary record will be the basis for that decision. Interveners are able to introduce facts into the evidentiary record and cross-examine witnesses. Public comments do become part of the administrative record, and public comments are considered by the members of this committee and the Commission. They help inform the commissioners, the committee, CEC staff, parties, and interested stakeholders of public concerns. And public comments are critical for all of us to understand the concerns of the residents of this community. So having completed all of the presentations, we are going to move on to the discussions identified in the agenda. Let us move to the next slide, maybe two slides. The slide that's entitled Discussion on Environmental and Other Identified Issues. There we go. Thank you very much. So this is going to be the opportunity for the parties to inform the public and the committee about key issues presented by the application and to discuss potential pathways to resolve them. As context, I want to inform the public about two key documents that were filed in the docket within the last week as directed by the committee order that noticed this informational hearing. First, on August 4th, CEC staff submitted an issues identification report in which it described certain items which staff believes will be the major issues to resolve in reviewing and analyzing the application for Willa Rock. In response, applicant filed its response on August 9th. So what this time is for is for each of the parties to briefly describe what they stated in those documents, to inform the participants and attendees who haven't had the opportunity to read the documents yet. I want to underscore that the purpose of this hearing is for the parties to provide information about the project to the members of the community, and for the committee and members of the public to ask questions about the project. However, this hearing is not part of the evidentiary process, so rather, I'd like the parties to have an opportunity to simply restate what you've submitted in writing for the benefit of everyone here today. So to organize the discussion, let's first focus the discussion on the topics that have been identified as potential issues in the Willa Rock proceeding. We'd like to hear first from staff to summarize its issues identification report, and then the applicant to summarize its response, and then we'll entertain questions from the committee. And then later, we will have a second discussion on the schedule. So let's first focus on the issues. So first, with that, I'd like to turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Renee. Eric Knight again.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric Knight with staff again. So as the Hearing Officer mentioned, we filed our issues identification report as directed by the committee on August 4th. We get, you know, the request for an issue ID report is a common feature request in every single proceeding. It comes at a very early date in the proceeding at the start, and so we do our best to identify and have the issues that we know about at the time. But since we're very early in our discovery efforts, additional issues may crop up as we begin our consultation efforts with agencies and begin our discovery efforts to visit the site and do our independent research. So what we outlined in our issue ID report are several topic areas. We'll start with biological resources. The concerns that we've identified to date are the completeness of the biological resources surveys. We've noted that a number of surveys that were conducted used outdated protocols, non-current protocols set by the wildlife agencies like California Department of Fish and Wildlife or United States Fish and Wildlife Service. Some species were not surveyed at all. And so I know the applicant has a response to that, has identified that we should probably have a workshop to discuss the items, and we think that's a great idea. We'd like to do that, get a public workshop. Let's see. Cultural resources and tribal cultural resources was identified as a potential issue in the sense that at the time that we had issued the report, consultation had not, well, we had not even sent out the letters to the tribes. This was filed on August 4th, and it required, oh, excuse me, the letters were sent July 26th, I'm sorry. So what we didn't have the benefit of was any responses yet to those requests for consultation. So tribes are afforded 30 days to inform an agency if they would like to consult. So that would expire, that deadline is on, you know, August 26th. So we're still a couple of weeks out from knowing when a tribe would like to consult. But the applicant did reach out to list the tribes that was provided by the Native American Heritage Commission. They heard a series of concerns from a couple of tribes about potential tribal cultural resources that could be impacted, significant landscape features that could be impacted by the project. So we're very early in that process, so this may or may not be an issue, but it could have an impact on the schedule. We'll still be identified here. Geological hazards and resources, it's kind of unusual for this to be a topic area in an issue ID report. So, but in this project, it is probably one of the primary issues that staff is concerned about. Normally, a geotechnical evaluation is done prior to an AFC being filed, and here, in this case, it had not started prior to the AFC being filed, and that work is underway presently, and is being conducted under a conditional use permit issued by Kern County, which is set to expire later this month. So the applicant is working with the county to extend that permit. That information is critical for staff to understand the feasibility of the project and the potential hazards that it could present. So there's a series of data requests that staff has written and set one of our data requests. And so getting that information in a timely fashion could impact the scheduling. We've got, I should have said at the start, and I think I said this earlier, that we have a number of technical staff online, on Zoom, who can answer specific questions the committee and the public may have on any of these topics. So moving on to the, the next issue that we identified was under the topic of land use. The county has informed the Energy Commission that the project is not consistent with the current zoning of the site, and so the county has identified a need for a rezoning, and also that the project would ordinarily require a conditional use permit. Now, with the Energy Commission's exclusive jurisdiction, that permit is not necessary for the county. It will be sustained within the Energy Commission's license. However, we will work with the county to ensure that any conditions that would be attached to such a permit are considered in the Energy Commission's certification. But the need for a rezoning, that would resolve a potential laws inconsistency, and the Commission is required to attempt to resolve any conformities before ever considering an override. So that's an issue. The timing of that is an issue. And when the county can make that, go through that process to rezone, and whether that information will be available for staff to report on in the staff assessment and advise the Commission, the committee, of the project's compliance with laws. The next issue, this may or may not be an issue I'm kind of hearing tonight, but the transmission system engineering. There was talk in the AFC and in the PowerPoint presentation tonight by the applicant that they are considering interconnecting to a future LA, Los Angeles Department of Water and Power substation. That's not the current substation, that's a proposed substation. And that there are no, the interconnection studies, you know, haven't been started. So if that's going to be a feature of the project, that could impact the schedule as well. But it sounds like maybe that's not the preferred option. Another issue that we identified was in the, Kern County's identified some future roadways and dedications that would need to be made for property owners from the applicant. And there's a question as to why not the project would encroach upon these dedicated access roads? And if so, there's a process to remove those or to downgrade that for quarterly meetings. So again, it's a timing issue that could affect the case here. So I think I will stop there. And yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. I'd like to hand it over to the applicant to summarize your response to the issues identification report.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff Harris on behalf of the applicant. A couple of things. We have a bit of a timing issue here. Our objections and requests for additional time are not due until the 15th, so we're still working through that document. So I guess we get a high level for all these things, and you'll see in detail on the 15th some of the issues we're working through. I guess I would summarize it by saying I don't see any major issues there, no deal breakers. I do think we need to get into a room and talk to each other. Some of these things are communication issues, disagreements about the scope of what kind of information we needed for the project moving forward. So we will be on the 15th filing a document that describes the issues we have, requesting additional time where necessary, objections, if there are objections to some of the materials. In between now and then, we're going to take a look at some of these and say, well, maybe there are things that we're not sure they need, but they're easy to produce, and we'll just produce them too. So there's a lot that will still be worked out between now and the 15th. And so my comments are very high level, and I'm glad you're not wanting to go take a deep dive into each one of these subject matters, because having lawyers talk about this stuff is already painful, five hours into this thing. So we'll keep it kind of short. But there are a few things with staff's position that we don't agree with, and we'll make those clear. There are questions about buffer zones and protocol, which species actually require to be surveyed. Obviously, the threatened and endangered species, where there are state federal protocols, desert tortoise, those kind of things are pretty clear, pretty straightforward, and we need to make a showing to staff that we've met the mark on those, and they've asked questions, and we're going to provide answers to them on those. Some of the other species issues are things that we don't agree with, that they're not threatened and endangered species, or not within the traditional range of some of these species. Thinking particularly about, and I never thought I'd say this on transcript, the crotch bubble bee, which is a subject of ongoing litigation in California. It's been recently classified as a fish by one court, which then would bring it under the Endangered Species Act. So that, we appreciate staff raising that sort of new uncertainty out there and providing us with some guidance on what they think we might want to start looking at, but there aren't any protocols for that particular species, for example. And having said that, I wouldn't go into detail, I've gone into too much detail, so let me stop there. So we will provide information for you on all those biological issues. I think the workshop that we've offered on the 22nd is going to be really important. We work very well with the staff. We have a good working relationship with the staff, although they are an adverse party, as they've made very clear today. They're an independent party in these proceedings, and we'll continue to work with them through these things. I'm sure the workshop on the 22nd will be quite productive, because I will be out of the country. So, sort of bragging there too, because I don't have to sit through it. But we'll look forward to that workshop to deal with the biological issues as well. And it talks specifically about survey work. On the cultural resources, absolutely, we're working with the tribes. We've already started that process. The Commission's process is underway as well. Take a look at that. Imagine you were here many, many years ago. It's obvious that we need to talk about the cultural significance of the area and make sure that that's respected and taken care of. And we're absolutely on the same page with staff on that, it's mostly just getting the information together. In terms of geological resources, Mr. Hildebrand will try to check this or carry it on, but we've got some very good information coming in on those issues. You saw that out there today. It is a little unusual. We're doing data collection during the process. I really want to thank Kern County for recognizing the unusual nature of that request. It's not typical, but this project is also groundbreaking, and in this case, ground drilling. So we're out there making sure that we've got the right geological conditions and really groundbreaking that. I almost put that more in the category of information we need for more detailed design as opposed to information for the environmental analysis. But regardless, it's good information for everybody to have, and so we're working diligently on the geological resource information to get that for you. Land use and transportation, yes, we are aware of the issues with the rezoning. We're working closely with the county on those. There's land dedication, road dedication issues. I've been informed about some issues related to franchises. So we're aware of what we're aware of those issues, and we'll work directly with the county and the state with the staff on getting the land use and transportation issues properly before you all. So those are the main issues that we see moving forward. This is a relatively clean issues and verification paper. One of the things that we're very concerned about is obviously schedule. Stop me if you've heard that from an applicant before, schedule, schedule, schedule. This is a unique project. It's an interesting project. When we brought the idea to certain members of the Commission even before filing, we were very clear about sort of the unique nature of this, although it takes a lot of proven technologies and combines them together. It hasn't been done quite like this in this proprietary way. So it's interesting as heck. The video is great. My concern is that we not turn it into a dissertation. You know, the level of detail required by CEQA is enough information for decision-makers to make an informed decision about the project. And so there will be, I think, as there has been in every case that I've been involved with for 30 years with the Commission, there will be discipline between staff and applicant about how much information is enough. And there are informal or formal ways to resolve that. The formal ways would be, you know, objections and requests for motion to fill, what have you. We really want to work through the informal ways, which would be, you know, workshops and working through the information. But one of the things, you asked us all to be very disciplined, and one of the things we're going to ask the Commission to be disciplined about is about that level of information that is required, enough information for you all to make an informed decision, but not so much that we're actually out there constructing it. We don't need detailed design, and that is art and not science. And so we'll look to you all to figure out where the artistry here is. But it is a concern we have with schedule, and I just kind of want to add that note. to our overall observations here. So I'm way past being short, so I'm going to stop there and answer any questions, so thank you.
... analysis that is currently underway pursuant to a conditional use permit that was issued by Kern County, because this is a really unique and sort of different process. And I was wondering, like, what's the public process around that? Because I think this is different enough, and again, CEC is taking pains to make sure that the public understands what's happening, the sequence, opportunities to participate. I'm assuming that's also a public process, and it's already been a public process. So what can the public, what can we all kind of expect as you move forward? Because it sounded like, and I might have misunderstood, Mr. Knight indicated that you might need to get another conditional use permit or an extension on your existing. So if you could explain that just a little bit, just briefly, and then give us the sense of what's next and what the timing is for that.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mr. Hildebrand to answer that question. He's been very close with the counties.
Again, I'd be happy to invite the county to speak to this point as well. But as far as background, we filed a application for a conditional use permit with the county for drilling program approximately five months ago. The application went through the normal planning commission process with Kern County, public hearing, conditions were attached to that conditional use permit. It was approved for a period of 90 days. We've been drilling under that existing conditional use permit to this point, understanding that a number of challenges to our drilling and timeline have resulted in an extended schedule for that. We approached initially the Energy Commission and the county as far as what makes sense to expand or extend our timeline to make sure we have time to provide the geologic information that you require and we require to proceed with the project. Long story short, we worked with both the Energy Commission and Kern County in resolving those open issues. The process recommended to us is currently underway. We filed a modification request, application to Kern County in the last week, and that is currently scheduled to go to the Kern County Planning Commission later this month, August 25th. And that would be an extensive extension to the current conditional use permit. And that's our summary.
Don't have to miss Oviat on the spot, but you're certainly welcome to South Carolina. Go ahead, Mr. Harris, and then I wanted to just leave Oviat the space.
Yeah, for the purpose of the clear record, I just want to make sure people understand the scope of the activities, it's data collection. We have not begun construction of the project, nor would you allow us to, because your statute would stop us from doing that. So this data collection activity is pretty narrow scope, but let me stop there.
Thank you. It's Lore Leliatt, L-O-R-E-L-E-I-T-T, Director of Kern County Planning and National Resources. I appreciate the representation that you're working closely, but the county does believe you should have done this before you submitted your application to the California Energy Commission. And we have communicated that. The geotechnical work is done under a number of conditions. We're concerned about noise, we've conditioned that, we're concerned about dust control and other sorts of things, and they have complied. We are disappointed that they haven't finished in their 90 days, and so the recommendation right now is to give them nine months. They asked for longer, and then they came back and said 30 days. We believe that this applicant is not clear about how long this is going to take. And I would not like to modify this conditional use permit again, because I believe it confuses the process as we work with the California Energy Commission. So the recommendation right now is nine months. I am not inclined to give them more time after the nine months. So it will go before the commission. At this point, we have talked to neighbors who have indicated that right now, the conditions that they have placed on their drilling have satisfied them. So we will see what the commission does, and we will certainly stay in communication with your staff.
Yeah, thank you so much, really appreciate that. Ms. Oviat, if I could just clarify, is the nine-month timeframe, would that be after the 90-day initial CUP expires?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And then we've also required that they provide us with a report. One of the conditions they provide us a report, what are you doing to leave the site so that, you know, there's not hazards or other sorts of things while they go through the California Energy Commission process? These are very small holes, but we still want a report, and we intend to file that with your staff. Thank you.
I have one last thing. And this just goes to, I think, a point that Mr. Knight was making and he was making with Mr. Harris, which is the value of the workshops. And I think to the extent that interested members of the public can listen in, can participate, it's a valuable opportunity to better understand the technology, to better understand the areas of disagreement between Energy Commission staff and the applicant, and to also be part of the solution of compromise. Because there are many instances in which the workshops allow for a resolution of issues that then don't have to be brought before the committee for adjudication. But I would like to emphasize, even though there may be compromise, our staff isn't compromising on their interpretation of the law or what they believe the law requires. It just becomes a matter sometimes, reasonable minds may reasonably differ on how they interpret the law. But staff is very conservative, and rightfully so, in their interpretation and in the application of facts to their requirements of CEQA. Applicants might not see it in staff's way. Applicants often get on board with what staff want, but at the same time, our staff is open to listening, open to compromising where appropriate, but they don't compromise on the law or on the requirements of CEQA. So I just wanted to sort of emphasize those points, but the workshops are vitally important.
Can I jump in for staff?
Yes, Mr. Bepiula.
Thank you for that. This is Jerry Bepiula, Staff Counsel, and I just want to do a couple of points. I like to think of it as independent review by the staff, not necessarily how the material were independent. And as Commissioner Carolyn noted, we will follow the law. And I also want to emphasize that we are also collaborating with the other wildlife agencies. And so when we look at, for example, surveys or some component of what's needed to ensure biological resources are protected, we're closely working, our technical experts with the other wildlife agencies, and so we try to reach consensus with them and then work towards getting the appropriate levels of information from the applicant to ensure we can do our analysis, which then informs both the decision makers as well as the public. And so it is an iterative process, which, as Mr. Knight indicated, we're still collecting information to help us formulate, and I think workshops will be helpful to further that process. But it is a process, and the public's participation is helpful, especially local knowledge on issues has been valuable in prior cases, so I would encourage that. And certainly, we want to do an independent, rigorous, and robust review with the emphasis of knowing this isn't a PhD dissertation, we're not going to dig into the weeds and do new research, but we also want to have a comprehensive document that we're all comfortable with. Thank you.
Getting a little bit of feedback here. I'm going to be nervous. Yeah, let's. I'm going to try another mic, it sounds better. So I'm not a lawyer, and so, you know, you're welcome. But I do have a tendency to sort of drill into technical details, which I'm going to bite my tongue and really resist doing right now. We have time to dig in some of these technical issues, and, you know, I do want to acknowledge the difference between actually building the project and actually figuring out how to build a project. So, you know, you're engaged in the latter, but I also, you know, I want to point out, you know, 1 megawatt to 8 megawatts to 500 megawatts is a big jump, okay? And so this is something truly new, right? It's not, it's not just sort of making a pilot bigger, it actually is much bigger caverns underground, different geology, drilling at a much larger scale. So I guess I just want to kind of express that, you know, yes, there's, you know, it's off-shelf technology, there's a lot to like, you know, really enjoy, Mr. Hildebrand, your presentation, and I think, you know, it's a lot of compelling benefits, potential benefits, long list. And, you know, but for example, you know, no significant cycle life degradation, you know, okay, I want to believe that's true, but I also think, you know, you've got a big cavern underground, and so there's potentially, you know, impacted pressure cycling. I kind of attempted to ask more detail about the hydrologic piece and the water loss, when you've got really dry compressed air going down on a cavern with a big interface with a bunch of water that's also down there in the back pressure, you know, and then when you liberate that air, you're carrying a lot of humidity up there. So like, you know, I don't really have a sense of what that looks like, and I don't necessarily not believe your calculations, but I just kind of want to get my head around those issues so that I feel grounded, right? So, and so, you know, I think I'm interested in sort of operational flexibility of this plant, you know, it's 500 by eight hours, or is it, you know, going to go to, how rampable, how, you know, could you do 50 by 80 hours, or, you know, fewer megawatts by longer hours? You know, all of that stuff is relevant, I think, for our more general kind of locating this project in California's reality more broadly. Not necessarily for our specific consideration of this AFC, right? But I think having that grounding and making sure the staff is asking those kind of questions, sort of figure out sort of what the context is specifically for this project in this So I just wanted to make sort of those points, and then ask, let's see. I guess I wanted to just ask a question about the round trip efficiency. How do you, how do you think about that? You know, it's not a given that round trip efficiency just has to be higher and higher, right? I mean, you know, if you have three renewables charging this thing up, you don't necessarily have, you know, a little loss is maybe fine, right? But I guess how are you thinking about that in your path forward to sort of optimize this in any future projects you might do here elsewhere?
The simplest way to look at round trip efficiency, for every 100 megawatt hours that you store, you put in to charge the system, how many megawatt hours do you get out? We're looking right now at about 60, 61 megawatt hours of storage back out. So that's a net round trip efficiency. We do have some technical experts from our team here that could paint some more color on that picture if you desire. We will certainly get into it more in the hearing process, and we're happy to provide you with all the color you'd like to see.
Yeah, okay, thanks. I want to dig into it more now, but I think that would be helpful to kind of understand the envelope possibilities, sort of where you think you might push that number up over time, or just, you know, optimize it. I don't have any other questions for now, I think I'm good. It's been a long day, I don't want to keep people here farther, but I do, I do actually want to just appreciate the care that the county has been putting into this and just paying attention to all that I've done, and making sure that the county process is robust, and I think that really helps us all. I do, just finally, I do have some concerns about, I mean, we've talked about the timing and the fact that you're just not drilling, and some of this uncertainty that I'm kind of, I guess, expressing some concern about is that there are a fair amount of unknowns here, just sort of, you know, I think probably you and all of us have our fingers crossed that you can not have any sort of left field things come in and really delay your process so we can finish, you know, so we can move this thing forward and get to a decision methodiously. But it does seem like a little bit of an apol on really getting that really done and understanding, you know, evaluating fully the geology. So anyway, just a thought, but I really appreciate the day, it's been super informative, and really glad to see, you know, the public here hopefully will get that engagement that we're looking for and really get the neighbors and the affected parties to weigh in and sort of express themselves. So we just, again, we want to encourage everyone to do that. But thanks to the applicant and staff, and Hearing Officer and Public Advisor, really a fruitful day, so thank you very much.
Well, we do have one more discussion to have. As has been mentioned throughout this informational hearing, the next deliverable to hit the docket will be the presiding member's scheduling order on August 26th, and we will be issuing that scheduling order. The statute requires it expressly for the pre-hearing phase, but oftentimes, we also include some timelines for the evidentiary phase as well. So a key deadline that I do want to recognize, there's a number of deadlines, you've heard 30 days here and there referenced by staff and the applicant. A key deadline in the Warren Alquist Act provides that the commission issues its final decision no later than 12 months after the application was found to be what we call data adequate. And that finding, as you've heard, was adopted by the commission at its business meeting on July 13th of this year. So the 12-month clock would run on July 13th of 2023. So I note, as has been discussed here tonight, there's, there's data and collection and discovery to be continued. There's, the staff has expressed concern in its issues identification report that the timeframe for the final decision could be impacted by the data that it believes it needs. And so there may be some disagreement about the extended potential delay, at least based on the documents we've received so far. We appreciate the expression of interest in informal workshops to resolve some of these things. We do want, at this time, as best as you are able and comfortable doing, we would like the staff and the applicant to describe any motions you think you may be making around issues of schedule, any other requests that you may be making regarding the discovery phase, and any options that you believe exist that will help ease the resolution of any disagreement in the schedule. And again, none of this is binding, this is not an opportunity to say litigate the issues of schedule, but I think just for the purposes of this committee and for the public, it would be helpful if, as you're comfortable, if each of you can describe what you think your, your plan is both with regards to motions that might impact the schedule as well as potential resolution. So again, I'd like to open it up to staff to describe the proposed schedule that you have included in your issues identification report, and describe it for the public who hasn't had a chance to see it, and also to offer any comments that you can, that might impact the scheduling order. Oh, yes, sorry, yes, next slide, please, thank you.
Hearing Officer, Mr. Hawkins, this is Eric Knight, you have your staff. One of the, what we had identified in our issues ID report is the potential to file a motion to extend discovery period beyond the 180-day limit. Again, in sort of the normal 12-month clock, a PSA is published about day 150, and then there's 30 days for a common period, so that then marks the end of the discovery period. But given that the geotechnical work is ongoing and could extend out to nine months, and that information we do feel is critical to understanding the project hazards it might present, its reliability and operability, that's a potential motion we would make is to not have that limit on us to 180 days. And I would defer to Mr. Bepiula to discover if he wants to add anything there.
Yeah, this is Jerry Bepiula. I would just say that on that issue of extending the discovery period, it really gives her flux and flux with this project. And so we do have, we realize they have demonstration projects at a much lower megawatt, as Commissioner McAllister noted, and so it might be possible that some information from that type of project could be useful to... to give us some sense. But right now, and we just wanted to put that up there, the potential issue that we would potentially need to extend the discovery period, not that we definitively need to do it, but it's just there as an issue, given the fact that there's still some ongoing information gathering going on. That's a little unusual for this, where we are in the project now.
Back to the biological resources surveys. And I just want to echo what Mr. Babula said is that the data requests that we've written about those surveys were written in coordination with staff of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So we are more than happy to have a workshop with the applicant and discuss those surveys, but it was a collaborative effort. And so, you know, if additional surveys aren't even necessary, those are oftentimes seasonally dependent. So that could impact the schedule as well. So getting that information, you know, in time for preliminary staff assessment may necessitate a need to extend the discovery period out, or extend the period when the PSA would be published.
Thank you. Applicant, would you like to comment?
Maybe not seem characteristic, but I tend to try to be an optimist. We may not need additional time for discovery, but we may. And we've put it in our schedule, I think, an additional 30 days at this point. So nothing in terms of motions, Hearing Officer Webster Hawkins, but we're reasonable people and we want to get through the process as quickly as possible, but we want it to be thorough. And I know the staff hates this, but sometimes one or two items will lag for whatever reasons. You have the ability to publish, you know, sections later for the lagging sections. I really don't want the gating item to be the gating item for everything. We can take advantage of the time for the, the issues we can knock off, if you will, to use that term, early and potentially have additional ones. You're required to do a staff assessment. Tradition is a preliminary and a final staff assessment, but we've seen part A and part B before where necessary. So, you know, I would just suggest that there are maybe avenues for us to keep the process moving even with anything that's lagging. And I think the commission is motivated to do that. The staff hates my application. Sorry, Jerry, look at him. But that's really not what we're talking about. We're talking about getting the information to the public as soon as possible so that they can digest it and provide us with some good ideas going forward too. So, you know, we understand the challenges ahead of us. You know, I, I think the one year, you know, is, is a, is an aspirational goal for all of us. And I'm Mary Sunshine on that one. Try to do our best on that, but we're reasonable people. It may not require a motion. If staff looks at us and says, we need this, this, and this, and we agree, we can have you join in with a recommendation for an order as well. And that's really the way we'd like to proceed. Obviously, it has to be better in the public process and the public gets their opportunities to weigh in on any of those joint recommendations. But that's, that's the way we'd like to try to address things going forward. You know, recognizing this is a unique project and there's some, maybe not moving parts, but there's some additional information that we need. And so we're cooperative with you, but we're not anticipating any motions at this point.
Any others, Jeremy, questions about schedule? Well, I appreciate, I think the committee appreciates hearing this discussion and as well as some detail about some critical dates that are happening in the next few weeks. The 1716 motion or notice that you mentioned, potential workshop on August 22nd, County Planning Commission meeting on August 25th. So thank you for that information and all of your participation in this discussion. So now we're going to turn to public comment that you've heard about so much this evening. In many CEC public meetings, we limit public comment to three minutes. And, and while we always invite the public to express their, their comments, whether as a statement or a question, usually our public comment periods are not designed to be Q and A. But here, because this is an opportunity, an informational hearing, if the public wants to phrase their comments and questions, and if the applicant and staff are willing and able to answer those questions, we would invite that. We will try to make sure that the conversation is boundaried, because I know we all want to, want to probably move on with our lives, but at the same time, we really do want this to be an opportunity for the public to ask questions and perhaps get some at least preliminary response from, from the applicant in particular and possibly the staff. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mariney to, to facilitate the comment and just acknowledging while local comment in the room and from participants on Zoom.
Thank you, Hearing Officer Webster Hawkins. Going over the instructions once again, public comment period will be the period for any person wishing to make comment on issues related to this proceeding. Public comment will be taken first in person and then for our Zoom participants. For in-room participants, utilize the blue-lined QR codes located on the wall and near the door at the back of the room. If you're unable to utilize the codes, there are blank cards on the table in the back. Please fill out your name and bring them to me. If you, if you are unable to do that or do not want to do that, you can also just come notify me of your intent to comment. If you're unable to utilize the features on Zoom, this is for our Zoom participants, you can call in the meeting and participate via phone by dialing 669-900-6833 or 888-475-4499 and enter webinar ID 93563988384. Each person has up to three minutes to comment, and comments are limited to one representative per organization. Speakers from public agencies or tribal governments are not restricted to the three-minute timer. Use the raise hand icon to indicate your interest in making public comments. This looks like a high five or an open palm at the bottom of your screen or device. And if you're on the phone, press star and I to raise your hand and star six to unmute. After you're called on, please restate and spell your first and last names for the record and give your affiliation if any. Be mindful not to use speakerphone because it will make it difficult to hear you. You'll see the timer to the right of your screen, and once you start, the timer will start counting. Once you've given your introduction, the timer will start counting down. Once your comments, once that timer has concluded, the moderator, or me, will request that you kindly conclude your comments in order to avail time for other commenters. So I'll start with in-room public commenters. Again, if you have not utilized the QR codes, go ahead and bring, bring the cards or to me or notify me directly. So our first commenter, Lorelei Oviat. An apologies if I've misstated your name. Please come to the podium and give your comments.
Thank you so much. I'm Lorelei Oviat, L-O-R-E-L-E-I-O-V-I-A-T-T. I'm the Director of the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department, representing the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We've been coordinating with your staff as we've done on so many other projects, and we very much appreciate the work that the staff and the California Energy Commission does. We have coordinated with the applicants on a limited basis, but we still have many, many questions. I have been delegated responsibility by the Kern County Board of Supervisors to make it easier for your staff. So I coordinate, my department coordinates county department responses, and we help your staff connect with the right people in the county if they have specific issues with things such as fire or public works or roads. So my department has a dedicated staffer who works on this project. So I've addressed my concerns about this geotechnical work. So I wanted to move on to a couple of other concerns that we have. So they've chosen an area because of the geotechnical, the rock that they need, but this is a area of rural residential use. And while they continue to characterize it as energy storage, we're all very clear that this has many characteristics of mining. And the presentation the applicant has made said that the construction will take four years on the presentation that we saw. The desert area of Kern County where you are, we are home to over 89s, including the largest open pit mine in California at Rio Tinto's U.S. 4X Mine. We are, we, meaning the Kern County Planning Department, is very familiar with mining, but we normally don't situate it in a rural residential area next to a main road. The Patch of Lee Willis Springs Road is the main road for access to the renewable area for wind and for Grimway Farms and their carrot operations. That road may not be used very much by people, but it's used a lot by very big trucks. And they have situated their project right on that main thoroughfare. So we are interested in the details on how this underground cavern will be created and stabilized. I can't imagine that it's not going to include blasting, drilling. What is the duration of that? What kind of measures are being proposed to address the noise and the dust? Dust is very, very critical out here since we have natural dust from our deserts, and we have the East Kern Air Pollution Control District on top of all of our solar and wind projects, and we fully expect that four years of construction to create the cavern that they're talking about has to be particularly and specifically managed. We're also interested in air impacts from those criteria pollutants and specifically noise. I appreciate that the applicant continues to say that they're going to meet the noise standards. I've done hundreds of EIRs. I don't know how you can blast or create that cavern and not exceed the noise. So then we should talk about other types of noise mitigation, such as sound walls, which our oil and gas drillers use, and blow up, pain so people can move out of their houses during your blast. I'd like to also point out that we are, we didn't happen to have one today, but we are in an overflight. We get very sudden and very loud sonic booms. They knock things off the walls, they scare your dog. I cannot imagine four years of blasting. So we want those details. And we also want all of that consulted with our fire department, who is, as well as your fire expert, very experienced with these types of things. And you would like to have those done as conditions of certification. We are not willing to wait for design. Once again, I've done hundreds and hundreds, me personally, of EIRs. There is a level of design, but then there's also a level that we understand what the impacts are, and we understand what conditions can be placed on it. Asking neighbors of this community to wait after certification for some blasting plan and noise plan, I think is inappropriate. I think there's a certain amount of information that they can provide. I believe that they don't have enough geotechnical to do it, and so this is kind of backwards as we committed. But with the engineering technology that they have, they should be able to figure it out. How are you going to create that? What is the process you created? And what are the impacts? And what kind of mitigation can you provide? This is located in what I like to call a bowl. All the noise in that area is, reverberates back because of the bluffs. So I am sure that the noise of that blasting is going to go much further. And I know that based on my own experience, the wildlife agencies are also going to be concerned about that. Like to also point out, we have the largest wind area, and we are very, very concerned about impacts to California condors. California condors are sensitive to many of those blasting episodes and very attracted to bodies of water. We have had a condor drowned in our fire tanks, and we have had to cover our fire tanks. You are now proposing 535 acre feet of a water source. I know that the, I'm sure that Fish and Wildlife will bring this up, but Kern County is personally, we have not, knock on wood, lost a condor. And I would hate to have any project in Kern County be the first one. So I would just like to raise that. Lastly, it will take four to five months to do the zone change. We are, we are proud to say that we have thousands of megawatts of solar and lithium battery storage that's ahead of this project. They have not submitted an application for a zone change. And I have a small staff, so I recommend that if that is a critical path, that they should take them into account. Last, we have suggested mitigation that we'll be, be offering to address the fiscal impacts and the issues on impacts to public services for the community. These are standard conditions that we place on all our solar, wind, and battery storage. And we, they've been vetted by hundreds of lawyers from wind and solar companies around the world, and so we hope that the applicant will, will accept them, and we certainly look forward to providing those. So ending, and I appreciate you giving me a minute or two over, we look forward to working with the CEC staff and the applicant at answering some more questions. I think that this project, if this project were being processed by the Kern County Planning Department, we would tell the applicant, you're not ready to move forward. You need to do more work. And so they are committed, dedicated, and this is an important project. So I look forward to hearing their answers. Thank you all so much for coming to Kern County in person.
Thank you. Next we have Josh Taylor. Please state, spell your name, give an explanation. That's Josh Taylor. Moving on, we have Sherry Timm.
Hi, my name is Sherry Timm, S-H-R-R-I-T-I-M-M. I am a resident of Rosamond, and I live in that rural area where the project is approximately two miles to the east. I am just stating concerns that I have about the project. I've lived in that area for about 30 years, and we've seen a drop in aquifers. I understand a little bit about the project and it's a closed source, but I'm concerned about the source of water, and I'm concerned about the impacts to existing underground aquifers. I'm also very concerned about the blasting, vibrations, noise, and dust that this project may bring. And I'm also concerned about operational noise in general, not operational noise is in general, and then the compressor noise in particular. Those are some pretty big compressors, and that sound could carry for miles. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you and for coming to Rosamond to listen to our concerns.
Next we have Luz Padilla.
Hi, my name is Luz Padilla, L-U-Z-P-A-D-I-A-D-I-L-K. I came here because I have questions, so I cannot phrase it in any common form. Is that okay? They said that this is going to be their flagship, so is that saying that they haven't built this project in the USA? Have you built anywhere else in the United States?
Sorry, let me go on the microphone. Perhaps we can do this. If you have a series of questions or comments, and can you stop the clock right now, please? Why don't you go ahead and express all of them right now? And then we can give the applicant an opportunity to be responsive after you sort of covered that instead of one-off. And so we'll go through the three-minute timer, and then applicant, if applicant is able or comfortable at this time, can respond.
Okay. And if you haven't built in California, I guess my two and three questions are at the doors. And then my, another one I'm concerned about is what materials are you using in your construction project and your eventual operation that would be toxic to people? And then when you're digging as deep as 2,000 feet, usually a lot of projects, you know, they dig and sinkhole appears surrounding areas even further out, you know? Or small hills appears. How, how do you, what kind of mitigation factors are you going to, you know, I mean, are you going to compensate people who will have damaged properties? Now, you, you will have a four-year project. You have big trucks, trucks that would be removing tons and tons of earth. You will be damaging our streets. Do you have any plans on repairing those damages or compensating, you know, Rosamond? Now, since you're digging 2,000 feet below, there's likelihood that radon gas, deadly gases. gases, VOC, volatile organic compounds will escape. How would you mitigate that? Because you can tell me radon gas would dissipate in the air, but it creeps on people's houses, barns, outhouses. What are you going to do? Are you going to provide professional certified radon services? And then, as a property owner or something about, like in our titles, usually they will say, you know, 500 feet below your land belongs to somebody else with mineral rights. Have you told them about this project? Are they informed? When you dig out tons and tons of dirt, where will you be dumping this? Are you going to, are you going to check first for contamination like waste and active waste? And if you find that it's contaminated, where will you dump it? Is the project fully funded, or are you still working on for the completion? Also, where would the funds come from? And you said you're insured. A lot of things could happen. I hope there are incidental insurance that you may have to look into. Are you going to be hiring workers locally? And if so, will they be unionized? Now, your groundwater reservoir is supposed to hold 565 acre feet of water to regulate the pressure. We have a water shortage, so where would this be coming from? You're talking about magic air. Question is, what is the minimum acre feet of water do you need on a daily basis? And if it goes below that 565 that you're talking about, would that be considered critical phase without water to cool out the compressed air? Is there a danger of major explosion? How big will that explosion be? Will it be earthquake size, atomic bomb size? What is the dimension of your groundwater reservoir? You're only saying 31 acres. What is your length, width, height? And since this is open...
Ms. Vidia, if you could finish your comments?
Since this is open, what percentage of the water will evaporate on a daily basis? And would your project create wastewater? What will you do with that wastewater?
And Ms. Vidia, if you could finish your comments? Next, we have Becky Goodman.
Just before we go to the next public commenter, I wanted to provide the applicant and also the staff the opportunity to respond to any of the questions raised by Ms. Vidia.
Thank you for your comments. You raised a lot of issues that we thought about in our development of this project. And in terms of brevity, these questions that you asked will all be addressed in detail throughout this process. Most of them have already been addressed in our AFC. Our application for certification is on the CEC website, and some of the, most of the fundamental questions that you posed are addressed in the AFC. We'd be happy to work with you to address those issues, point to where those answers are, and sit down and understand any other concerns you may have. It is a long list, and it will take more time to address those individually. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right. We can proceed with public comment. Thank you. Next, we have Becky Goodman.
Hello. My name is Becky Goodman, B-E-C-K-Y-G-O-O-D-W-I-N. And I love the pictures you posted. I love them. They're beautiful, especially from, coming from Hamilton toward the proposed site and north. It looks beautiful. However, 80-story, how tall would you say it was going to be? That the burn for your reservoir touches our back fence in all of your projected pictures. I have a beautiful view right now. Once you put those buildings up and that burn, now that you cut my view in my path, and the view that you're taking is beautiful, sun rises, I have beautiful views that you're going to tell you why. And there's no way you can tell me we've got a very small footprint, because it's huge from where we sat, because our house is just like right there. Two and a half acres, we love it. And what is the mitigation you're going to have on that burn? I mean, flood insurance, okay, but sorry, we're still downhill from 650 acres of water. And I'm curious as to how you plan on making sure that we're safe. But it does look nice. I'm glad that the work is coming in. I'm glad the community will have jobs. I like my house. I like my view. I like the quiet, which we don't have now. The truck's on the road. We do actually hear the drilling. I haven't seen a lot of dust because we've seen the water truck, so thank you for that. But we actually do hear stuff. And if we can hear that, those turbines that you're talking about, I come off a Navy ship. Those turbines.
What is the, what is the risk of an earthquake that could damage the storage? You know, there's a tradition of construction of energy facilities on earthquake fault zones. And also the expanded fracking and wastewater injection planned for Kern will increase the risk of earthquakes, maybe more than was shown on the old maps. Oh, is there radium or uranium underground that could be brought out? But remember, Aliso Canyon National Gas Storage, when exploded uranium was found, after exploding, uranium was found in nearby residents' hair by Dr. Nerdella. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Want to check once again for in-room commenters? Seeing none, Hearing Officer Webster Hawkins, I hand the mic back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Mariney.
Yeah, I just wanted to, well, just this for Ms. Vidia. I think the public advisor can help connect you to some of the materials that are in the docket, so that you can look through those and potentially get some answers to your questions that are already in the docket, but then also connect you with the applicant so they can help you run down answers to the rest of your questions. So I just, I wanted to just point out that that's, that connectivity is the role that the public advisor helps play, because it's not always clear how to access the information, you know, in an efficient way. So please look out for Ms. Mariney, her colleagues in the public advisor's office.
Okay, so at this time, we can move on to the next slide. So I just wanted to make a follow-up comment on what we've heard with the questions and the comments that have come from the residents. And you raised really important points. We're hearing these, the Energy Commission, at least the commissioners right now for the first time. These oral comments are important, and we'll take them into consideration. But we really do encourage you to continue to follow this process, to raise these concerns with staff as well, because part of the job of staff in working with the applicant is they do the analysis on all of the various things you've raised, is how do you avoid or how do you mitigate these impacts? And understanding what the impacts might be is very important. So you already have your comments in our record as of now, but I would just ask you to continue to raise your points, continue to press staff and the applicant to address them, to help you understand where in the application for certification, some of these things might already be addressed and where they have yet to be addressed. So I appreciate Commissioner McAllister that you've invited our public advisor to assist members of the public with navigating our docket with identifying documents. And I appreciate that you invited discussion. You said at the top of your presentation that you're looking to be a good partner with the community. I think one way that you do that is to help the community understand the information that's being submitted. So I appreciate that, and we're going to look to you, I think, to, you know, to follow through on that, because it's really important, understanding what's going on here. This goes back to my conversation with you, Mr. Harris. The clarity, the accessibility of information is going to be helpful to all of us in this process. So thank you all for your comments. Thank you. And with that, I just want to confirm, I've heard, I believe that there's probably not a need for a closed session tonight. Is that from the committee's perspective? Okay, all right. So we are going to not have a closed session, which means we're going to move to adjourn. And so in that vein, I don't know if there's any further closing comments that the members of the committee would like to make.
I just want to thank everyone for coming in. Thank you for the contribution here, that public comment is essential, and I'm really grateful for those who showed up today. And I want to just encourage everyone to follow along, but also try to, you know, be as clear, and persistence is good, but be as clear as you can be, whether it's in verbal comments or written comments in the docket, what your concerns are. And, you know, don't be afraid to keep asking if you don't feel like you're getting the answers that you need. So, and again, I think the applicant has committed to work with the community and to establish, you know, a trust that's durable with the community around this project. So, you know, let's make sure that happens. But really, really encouraged today, really great to be here in person. We haven't had a lot of it in the last few years, and so it's really terrific to just be here in three dimensions and be able to go through a really vital process. So thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And I'll just round it out again, echoing Commissioner McAllister's thanks to the community members for coming out. Ms. Oviatt, thank you for your comments. Staff team, appreciate all of your preparation today. Applicant team, appreciate it as well. Hearing Advisor Bernie Webster Hawkins, she did an excellent job tonight. You wouldn't know it, this is her first one of these, and she is a pro. And so thank you for facilitating this and making it a comfortable and welcoming space for everyone. Really appreciate it. All right. Well, with that, I'm looking at my Apple Watch, and it says 7:48, and we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.